We're gonna call our commission report session. I want to thank everyone for coming today. Ms. Lord, you can be on your best behavior.
Yes, the best I can.
And we'll have one word of prayer and then we'll get started. Let us pray. Father, please come as a believer seeking you and seeking your wisdom. Fathers, we plan, this is our work session. Father, you know that this is where we're planning and making decisions, things we'll vote on here in a couple of weeks. Give us wisdom and help us remember what needs to be covered and what we need to do to help our county, Father. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen. I got the letter, I think y'all have the brochure for KCS. Wes Allen, our Secretary of State, has made availability for a GIS program at no cost to the county for registration, the initial cost. And I wanted you guys to be aware and understand and see, you know, get your take on it and understanding. And y'all here there still, and they were very nice to come today to talk about it. It's my understanding then, the established cost will be nothing to us, but in the future, that may be the question. So I'm gonna let Ethan, he's gonna come up and speak for KCS, and we'll bring him up. Ethan, you've met so the commission.
Just kinda coming in and out and everything, so. My name is Ethan Southern, this is my colleague Alan Anderson. So we are based in Pellon, Alabama, so about an hour and thirty-five minutes or so away from you guys. And just wanted to come and talk to you guys, tell you a little bit about our company, tell you about this product, maybe some of the things that you've heard. If you've got questions, we want to open that up and feel free to ask any questions that you want. As far as our company, we've been in business for close to twenty years. We again are based in Pellon, Alabama. We've been doing GIS work all over the state of Alabama, a little bit in Tennessee, Georgia, and Mississippi as well. Our primary work that we've been doing has been for the revenue commissioners and tax assessors for mapping, for the parcel data. But we also work for cities, utilities, 911, helping them with their GIS. And a lot of people may think that a GIS system, oh, I have a GIS system which, you know, with Joyce Fuller and her department and what she does here, you know. Yeah, well, we already have a GIS system. I believe I saw somebody with 911 here as well. But that would be like, I would go say, if you were to go in and buy an appliance, you're not gonna buy a washing machine to do a dishwasher job, right? I guess you could try to put your dishes in there, I don't know if it'd turn out too terribly well. But you've got different appliances for different jobs. That's the same thing when you come to a GIS system. So the GIS system that's working function for 911 is different than that for the revenue commission. Same thing for the registrars. So we've been doing this for about ten years. We started with Montgomery County. And the current system for the registrar's office is a range-based system. And when I say a range-based system, so whenever you're mapping, your district lines may change, whether it's Board of Education, whether it's congressional, whether it's city limits. I don't know all the different districts that break up your county, but each of those, as those change and they morph, you know, they have to be updated by the registrar. So the registrars have the job to have to go in and try to determine where those breaks of the ranges are. So is it between, you know, twenty-five First Avenue all the way to three oh five First Avenue? And then you get in the anomalies where sometimes the left addresses are always, or the odd addresses are always on the right or the left. So you get anomalies that occur that can cause a great deal for the registrar's office. So what the system that we devised nearly ten years ago takes care of is it's not using range-based addresses anymore, it's using point-based addresses. So the efficiency, the accuracy, you really can't get any better than that because instead of being a range-based address, now you're dealing with points. So the registrar's able to go in and identify and put that point not only where the mailbox is, because that's not where the letter of the law says as far as someone that votes. The letter of the law basically dictates that it's where you kill your head. So if you want to put it on the corner of the house where you slumber or you get kicked out and you have to go to the couch, they could move it over if you had to. So what that allows to do is the accuracy for the registrar's office, they can put that dot specifically where it needs to do. So that's step one on the accuracy. The step two is what I was telling you with the district lines, there are several counties in the state of Alabama that have been affected by the new congressional lines. So with that, it has cut up and carved up their county a great deal. Well, that completely wrecks the way that they've done their ranging. So now that sinking feeling that the registrar feels that, oh, I've gotta change everything up, you know, that is a real thing. The other part that you will, that'll also feel is whenever the census lines, the redraws occur, and all those lines get broken up. And now they're like, here, here's all your new precinct parts, or precinct lines. Well, they've gotta redo it. So that's a sinking feeling and I'm sure the many of the registrars that have ever had to deal with their street files is a big pain. So now if we've got all the address points here, what we can do as a company, they manage, the registrar's office manages all their dots. We manage their district lines, so if there's annexations, anything with the bottom district lines change, you could pick up all those dots. We basically essentially pick up all the dots, you can change all the district lines, we set the dots back down, and they automatically get assigned the new precinct part that they're assigned to. Therefore, anybody that's living at that location, the registrar or the voter, when they get assigned, then whenever they go, then everything's taken care of. They get the right precincts, they get the right districts, they get all that automatically taken care of. So the efficiency and the speed of being able to run an election is unparalleled. Again, we've been doing this for a lot of different counties. Before the Secretary of State and Secretary Allen got the funding to be able to do this, again, we've been doing this for Montgomery County. We had amassed nearly, I think it was around thirteen counties that we, counties that went, purchased themselves. It was around ten thousand dollars right now, the current setup fee. Well, I say the current, not under the contract, it's taking care of this fee. But prior to this coming in place, it's ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a setup fee for us to come in, do all the mapping, do all precinct changes, the parts, and all the dots, and do the training. And then it was eight hundred dollars a month to maintain that. So that is being completely eliminated by the Secretary of State and the contract that we had in place with them. They're covering those fees completely for you through July of 2025. That's how long the contract. After that, a part of signing the letter that the Secretary of State requires, if you guys wanna go on the system, it would basically be that you guys as a county would take up the monthly's going forward after that point. So right now, we're anticipating it around eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, maybe eight fifty, but it won't be any more than that. And my company will preferably contend in signing a document to say it would not be any more than that moving forward, starting August of 2025. So in a nutshell, that's what we're doing. I know you probably have questions. If you do, please ask those now. And if you don't, if you have any questions in the future, we're not very far. We're happy to come back up here, especially in a beautiful facility like this. But we're happy to come back up and answer any questions. Do you have any questions?
Um, I spoke with Alan and he said that we can do this and then it would be our decision later if we decided we didn't wanna go further.
Hundred percent, absolutely. I will tell you that it's one of those, once the registrar gets on and your county gets on that system, going back to an antiquated range system would be very, very difficult. That's what several counties, Lauderdale and I think most, more famously, Etowah County went through because they were based on a range-based system and there was a lot of election, or an election that got a lot of headlines due to that. And that's what you're eliminating through this. So I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just saying I don't think you will want to do it. Whether it's with us or not, that's completely up to you guys to do it. We are the only ones in the state of Alabama doing that type of work. So I hope I answered your question.
Okay. Wanted the county commission to be aware, and I guess you were, some of you were aware, that a neighboring county did have some problems last time, things got swapped around. So it's easy to do and even during my tenure, we had a road, I think that it flipped between even and odd numbers and it caused some confusion a little bit. But we were able to catch it and fix it, so, but just wanted you to be aware of that. So this would be a benefit or something free to us, but as we go further, you'd have to make a decision as a county commission, whether or not you'd wanna maintain that expense, at that expense. So roughly about ten thousand a year.
That's correct. Once you get past that, the first year, entry fee was closer to twenty with the one-time setup fee and then the monthly's, that's correct. It would go and follow when you're arriving at ten thousand dollars a year.
And I know Brother Phil here with Board of Registars knows, and I know some of y'all have seen that, that map that they work and do, but it is, it's not an easy, easy task to map out where all the lines are at.
And everything goes digital at that point rather than the system like ours?
Ms. Fuller? Ethan, I know that y'all are in the GIS data stuff anyways. And we currently, you know, we have flagship. My question is, is the parcel data, where are you getting the parcel data to do the overlays for this particular thing? Is it through the state, through our office, through to the state?
Well, the request could be made, but we would come knocking on your door on behalf of the registrar's office to say, hey, could they get a yearly cut or a monthly cut or something like that of your data as a reference state? It's not required for a project like this to have to have it, but it is ideally to be in the system because the registrar's not having to come over and knock on your door and say, hey, who lives here? Because I heard somebody was talking about having to go out and go to the mailboxes and check. But like our system ties in, if you've ever seen Google Street View to where you could drop in and if Google has ever driven past, you can actually go to a street view and it's like you're standing around looking at both sides of the street. So we've tied that into the software and that prevents the registrar's office from having to go out and do field surveys. I'm not saying it takes care of everything, it's not perfect, but it allows.
Well, I think the more, let me move on to this, that would it be beneficial then if you have that capabilities and you're using our data anyways? Would it be something that those two things could eventually be one and we could reduce maintenance fees all the way around for the county?
Well, it's a great question, but kinda going back to the analogy of, you know, appliances, right? If you're gonna get a dishwasher, you're not gonna say, they're not gonna give you a cut. Sometimes they might give you a cut if you're buying all the appliances at once, granted, I will tell you that. Not necessarily in this case though, because what you, like what you're serving and what you're giving out is very specific for your appraisers and what they do and your mappers and what they have to do. On top of that, the end product that you're serving out is gonna be typically a free public viewer. And that's not, this is not a public viewer out for the citizens to, you know, see what the addresses are. This is a password-protected web-based system hosted out of our facility in downtown Birmingham, out of a class three rated hosting facility called DC Blocks. It's a very nice location where we have it. So great questions. I mean, there might be a little bit, but not, nothing significant of like half or anything, but I love to chat with you.
So nothing in overlay, there would be nothing in overlay where the same system kinda separates that overlay, but we're all sharing the same, maybe parcel data?
We can overlay data and if the registrar wants to share back any of the addresses that they have and they give back to you, and you can have them overlay on top, but as far as a cost savings, there's not a ton of cost savings there, but what you can have is the registrars and you can share the data and they can be on top of each other and you can use them as reference layer. And that's what we do, even like with 911 data. If we're able to get that, that's a great data set to show into the registrar's office, but it will be a read-only. There's no editing to that because I'm telling you, 911 doesn't want anybody editing their data. And I'm telling you, the registrar's doesn't want anybody editing their data. And you may say, well, they're both addresses, Ethan, I mean, why are we doing that? Well, the difference though is the way that the registrars, because I've been doing this a long time, the way the registrar spells Boulevard may be different than the way that the 911 does it. And the 911 has to adhere to certain, a lot more stringent standards on their addressing than what the registrar's does. And with the registrar's tying into ESNS Power Profile, the state-run system for voting, the way that it's spelled there has to match in our software, which is called VAM, Visual Address Management. And you guys have the flyer there, and this is a really good one. We went through all the years we've been doing and all the questions that were asked. It's basically a Q and A, so you can just kinda go through this, read those, and it'll answer probably, well, it'll answer, I think, most of your questions, but it'll probably sperm a few more questions, so anyway.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hughes. Okay, you're gonna, you're gonna take our data from 911 or revenue, whatever. What are you gonna do with that data? You gonna sell that data?
No, absolutely not.
You gonna provide it to candidates?
No, oh, absolutely not. No, this has.
So you're not gonna do anything that doesn't come back to us?
It's your data, it is your data. Any, any, all we're doing, we're the conduit for the data. So we're allowing the registrars to be able to see their data and manage their data, see your data, see revenue data, all that data. So we do not sell, I'm happy to sign anything you may need to do. We are very staunch, even in a county where we work, like Talladega County, we work for the 911, border registrars, highway, and also revenue. And if revenue wants to get some data from the 911, we don't share it without asking 911 and saying, hey, is this okay to share, even in between agencies? So it is a, it's a pet peeve of mine and our company, so we do not do any of that. So great question, but no, we do not sell at all.
So what now, when we do our census and we redistrict, like last time, what we pay in?
That was gonna be my question to him. If we have to redistrict and we find out there's a difference, can we do it using this software ourselves?
So redistricting is different from your addressing, so the redistricting side of it, that is still done. And I know, is Alabama a state?
Yeah.
That you would still go through them? Not that we couldn't, but they, they have such a good hold or good process of doing that. It's probably the most economical way that you're gonna go about doing is getting your redistricting. Now, once that redistricting is done, that data will be handed to my company and then we take that and we pick up all those dots, we change all the precinct parts. The registrars don't have to worry about any, any of the district lines. We modify and change all of that. All they're responsible for are the dots, where the registered would be.
So when the census comes up again in thirty, basically, we may have to redistrict. We got away with it this time, there wasn't enough changes. So we didn't change the lines. Only thing that changed was the House of Representatives line, you know, and that made it easier for us this time. We didn't have to split any precincts up. However, what he's saying is, and I think y'all understood that, that he could take that data after we went to Alabama State and load it in, it would take a lot of pressure off border registrar. I mean, it would just make it work.
Once we get that data, I've said, once we get your new data, there could be all kinds of district changes, whether it's from redistricting or whatever it may be. And we could change everything up, set the dots right back down, assign them into ESNS. We've got all that worked out with Power Profile. You could be running an election within forty-eight hours. Under the old system, if you change all those district lines, I mean, it could take them months, months in accuracies with it.
Do we know if, we would, in the future, would we get any cost, like, you know, we get half of our expenses paid by the state? Would any of that merit be a part of that?
Well, you know, my, my hope is, you know, the, it continues to be a state-funded thing, but I mean, I, that's just, that's just me. It's not even my, my company stance, you know, I mean, because it's easier to deal with one person on a contract than all the sixty-seven counties. But in that instance, so that would be completely up to the Secretary of State and, you know, if the funding would continue to flow from there. So, and who knows what might happen after 2025? But I assume there's gonna be some other talks, but I mean, we're, we're running wide open. I mean, we've got thirteen, we're up to how many now?
Right up, close to fifty.
Well, we haven't implemented completely, but ones that are signing up, like if you guys said, yes, we want it, can you get it in before the next, before the primaries and we're like, no, so we just can't? We're probably pushing close to May or June of next year before we could even implement you for all the elements stacking up, so.
What is your deadline for when you need to know for sure that the commission would agree to do this?
There's really not a deadline, quite frankly. And I, you know, as much as I would like to say, yeah, there's a deadline, you want you guys to go ahead and move forward, but there's not a deadline. It's really how much of the, the funding that's there that you guys wanna take advantage of. I mean, you could run it all the way up to July 2025 and implement that month and you would still get that, you wouldn't, you would get that month free, right? For the services, but as far as the setup fee, that ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for that, that would be completely covered even if you implemented that last month of the contract. So you would still get a great benefit cost-wise of that, but the sooner you decide, the longer you can be on the system. And the way that we work, you're, really, it's, it's more predicated at the state level in ESNS that we can't, we don't implement a system sixty to ninety days before an election is being held just because of registrars and everything's gotta be, you know, it's gotta be clear-cut. So we don't change anything sixty-nine days before an election. So that's really up to you guys.
Yes, sir.
Ethan, I'm asking this for a friend out of registrar's office. After the maintenance, after this grace period of the state taking this, this program over in July.
Twenty twenty-five, that's right.
If the county decides not to continue with the maintenance on this, and I assume that's what the eight hundred and twenty to eight hundred and fifty dollars suspected will be, do they lose all the software that's already there? Because we have a lot of maintenance stuff and even in my department that if we're not paying the maintenance, you don't get any of the past data from that software.
That's correct. You would be handed over all the data and then you'd be responsible for the software because that's really, there's, that ten thousand two hundred and fifty is for training, it's setup, you're not buying software. That monthly is for the service, it's the software, it's the hosting, everything. But going back to your question earlier, we're not gonna hold that data. That's your data, so if you wanna switch to a different system or change and you say, hey, give me a cut of all of our data, we're gonna say, here you go. So first, we're gonna say, what did we do wrong? So, you know, what can we do?
I think you can have another question. Would that interact with a notebook where you go in and sign, when you sign to vote at the polling place?
It will on pretty much any platform, our VAM software.
My question is, okay, say, I go into a district, it's not, I mean, to a polling place, not my polling place, and I try to sign in. Will it come up and say, hey, this is the wrong place?
No, it's not made for that. This, this, really, most of the time, I forgot, how many days before the election do you have to have? You can't really take anymore.
About fifteen.
About fifteen days, so fifteen days prior to it, you know, no one can sign up to vote in that election. And that's where kind of our software, ours isn't meant to be a polling location, any of that. Everything should be already set.
Established, yeah.
Established and ready to go. It's a great question, but it's, it's not meant for that.
Yes, it's strictly gonna be for the three border registrars to make it, so that we don't, because of human error, that we don't make the mistake when, if new lines are set. We're not in a big pressure here in our county. However, it might clean up a few things for our board registrars, but in the future, it would make life a lot easier. But ten thousand dollars a year, that's what you as a commission have to decide after twenty-five, you know?
That's right.
All right, one more question. Yes, sir. This is just for an address. This don't tell you if there's a qualified voter in that house or how many people live in that house. This is just an address.
That's right. It's just for an address and it's really built for that situation. We, early on, it's interesting that you bring it up, early on, we did a few tests and, you know, where, because we know the address, we could actually pull more data out of the state-run system and tie to, not the name of the person, but we could tie, was that a Republican? Was it a Democrat or elections they tied into? And, you know, so people could go out and use, utilize that if they wanted to canvass. But we found on fairly, fairly early on, that wasn't the angle that we were going for, for, because, you know, candidates could go out and, you know, request data from Power Profile and get that kind of information, but it does not have any of that. It is simply an address that is tied, and it's a very powerful address though, right? Because I mean, it's, it's what our entire democracy is based on, where people go and vote and what they do. And you brought something up earlier and I forgot what it was, but I think I would maybe say.
I can follow up to that. What it does do is make sure your person, red shoes to vote, that they're assigned in the proper location. There are some areas where, it's like around Ranburn in the last school war election, there's some people that thought their kid, since they went to Ranburn, that they should vote in an election, but they live in a different district. So just make sure that the voter gets assigned to the place where they actually live, that's the right district. And so there were two registrar's in Etowah County that got fired under the roof holiday end with, I think it was Etowah County, counties where they changed some districts, people weren't notified, they were showing up at the place where they used to be and nobody told them. Nobody knew where they were supposed to go, it cost them an election. I think they had to go back and redo it, you know, so God cuts out some of that stuff.
I remember what, you helped me remember what I was going to say, the judge was talking about a second ago, was whenever you go through, and there hasn't been one single county that we take, it's called a PSR report that comes out of the ESNS software, the state-run software that they use right now. So we get a report of all the addresses and, you know, there are legacy addresses currently in your system that are kind of kicked down the road, if you will, that are not valid addresses, but they've been in the system long enough that they just, they're just out there and they're, they're just, they're just floating out there. Doing an exercise like this cleans up all of that because if we can't place that address on God's green earth, it's gonna come back as an exceptions report for the registrars and say, you know, these are the two hundred and twenty-five we couldn't find. And a lot of times you'll find one that's a PO box. Sometimes you'll find one that just has, it's an invalid address, but it's just a zip code and it'll show up as a red dot. And a red dot is not good. That means if we couldn't really locate it, we, we could make it put in a zip code, that's about it. They're gonna get some yellow dots. Yellow dots are the ones that we couldn't place directly on top of a house. And those yellow dots are the ones, the yellow and the red are the ones that they wanna focus on first and foremost in an election. And, but we stepped through that whole process and training, we go through the whole thing. So we usually have about a three to four-hour training session on-site. Alan can come on-site to do that and, you know, we step them through, we handhold. And I'd be happy to give you all of our clients, any of the clients that we've served and their before and their after, kinda snapshot, nothing to tell you about it. And the last story I'll tell you, up in Morgue County, we, when we did this for them, there was a lady that came back and she was pretty perturbed because where their house fell was just outside the county and her husband worked in the other county. She was fine with him because he would drive over and it was easy for him, but she worked in Morgue County. She wasn't happy because she's like, well, you're saying I can't vote over here? She's like, but that's where I work, like, it doesn't matter. And the reason that was the case was because they had about a two, three-hundred-foot driveway and the house sat in a jointing, but the address fell in Morgue County as far as the mailbox. But it doesn't matter where the mailbox is and those are things, they can't, just can't control it with ranges. You have to do it by point base, so, but it just helps clean up and accuracy and efficiency out, so.
I think we have that in Ranburn, you know, you have a few folks who have valid addresses that actually live inside the county office.
And if we're able to get for your county, the parcel data, now the registrars, they're working inside and you see all the dots. And, and if we're able to get for your county, the parcel data, now the registrars, they're working inside and see all the docs. They'll see the parcel lines and even if it's an address that has never been put into the system before, they can click on that parcel data and they can see who owns it and it just helps with reconnaissance, you know, and trying to do some research on it. And, you know, I don't know how often they get with your department to ask questions, but, you know, it just saves time. Again, it goes back to that efficiency of being able to do things. And, you know, a lot of counties have put up TVs like that in the registrar's office and when somebody comes in, all this will be digital. They can actually put the software up on that and turn on different layers. And somebody's arguing about it, say, well, is this your house? Yes, it is. Well, this is where the line cuts through. And they can turn on individual districts. So if you just want the board communication to show digitally, turn that on. That way it makes it very clear where that's at. So it really takes you out of the paper world or, and all that into the digital.
So I just wanted you all to have an opportunity to think about it. And I know it's, and you heard it would be a no cost to start with, but if you decided to stay with it in the long range, what it would cost you basically a year? So all the child decided whether or not y'all like to put it on the agenda or you don't have to do it today, but, but something to consider. Y'all have any other questions for Ethan? We will thank y'all for coming.
Thank you. Right. I mean, for us, it's one of those where it's paid for tonight. I mean, so we'd love to have it as a customer. And maybe you guys try it and if you guys decide you don't want it, that's completely on the prerogative on that. But I, I think you would definitely see the benefit of giving an opportunity. We'd love to talk with some other counties. We, we could set you up and get you some information and contact, contact them and talk about it. So thank y'all very much for your time. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all are welcome to stay the whole work session. We'll give you a pass if you need it.
Well, we, we may take the pass if that happens. So, but I appreciate it.
I mean, the last guy stayed.
That's right, that's right.
No, I'm just kidding. Make sure you buy something on the way out or something.
We'll, we'll do.
Stop at a store, buy a drink.
We'll spend some money.
Yeah, get you some Mexican food or something.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for sending that. Thank you, sir.
Joyce, good to see you.
Text me, call me, whatever.
Brother Field, did you want to add anything to that?
Not really. I can't spell G I S. We've never used it. I know there's counties around us, Calhoun has a full time G I S person that does their stuff. Randolph has it. Several other counties are getting it based on this program. I guess it would be helpful, you know, from what I know, because we're going into the, obviously in the digital age. And it's just, it's just an extra layer to make sure that people actually live where they say they, and we got them in the right place where they need to be.
Joyce, I wish your opinion and Crystal's opinion about it.
Well, I mean, at any time that you can make stuff easy for your own folks that are, are working, I'm for, let me say this on my, on my end. Any data that you need from the revenue commissioner's office, I'm going to pass that forward to whoever you decide that goes to, because y'all are helping to pay for that data. So it is your data. So if that's what you, you choose to do, I'm going to push that data forward for y'all mine. I did that with Crystal when she, she did her new mapping system. We have her parcel data for, for her mapping. That is not an issue. We don't sell our data, but we did give it to the people that pay for it.
I'll add this too. I think when this first started being talked about as far as G I S was baby back the beginning of last year sometime. And I thought, well, hey, you know, Joyce has got G I S and nine one one's got G I S, so maybe we can plug in to one of those systems and we'll be good to go. But they don't talk to each other. We can't use her system, can't use the nine one one system.
That's why I was asking if it could be an overlay thing or would it be a benefit for us to be under the same system?
And we do call nine one one a good bit because we get electronic registrations. And it'll be just signed at our county and it shows up and, you know, we don't have, we don't have that county road. There's one that's close to Randolph. We had one the other day that wound up being Randolph. We thought it was Cherokee because it looked like, I'm looking at a physical map, it was up close to two seven eight. It turned out the person lived in Randolph County. And so we called nine one and they said, we don't have it. And so we were like, well, where do they go? You know, and so it would be helpful in that regard too, I guess, to, to cut out some of that.
As of right now, it's based on your, your address, where you're, where you register to vote at. With that, and when that is where the mailbox is, not where your house is at, right?
That's correct.
Based on the address, but, you know, like we had, well, somebody had moved to Randolph County down to Lake Weedaw. And when they went and got their driver's license, we were notified and we moved them to Randolph County. When the city election came up in Hethland, they showed up to vote in Hethland. And they're business owners and that's like, well, why can't I vote here? Because this is my address. And they didn't believe them in Hethland where they didn't know that driver's license information that already moved. So you have to, that's what it comes up sometimes, you know?
Crystal? I would just add that any type of advancement we can do in the G I S world, we need to do it. You know, the nine one one database was built off of a paper map book. So when we got our mapping database, we literally had to piece it together. So any type of layer that can be built that we could all benefit is, in my opinion, we should absolutely do that. And secondly, I have a TV map. It's a very hard one to.
You what?
I have a TV map.
Okay.
Take me to this one. Yes.
Going back to this right here, so you're saying if somebody come up there and they moved to Weedaw, if they did their address, they changed their driving license to Weedaw. And they own property in Cleveland County, or homes in Cleveland County, then if their driving license is in another county, how does that base on their taxes?
It, it, it would change them from a class three to a class two, depending on whether or not that home is a first or second home or if it's being occupied by somebody other than.
Well, if you move your driving license, you would be, it would have to be your second.
It, it could be a second home, but most, most likely, when we get the, when we get a address change in our office, that's something we send the appraisers out to see, to see, knock on the door and say, who's living there? But typically we change it to a class two and we let the taxpayer prove to us that it's their second home.
And you, and you vote supposedly based on where you reside.
Yes.
And if I'm residing at, at the lake.
But why would you get a driving license out of that, out of your community? And then come back thinking you're going to vote in that community?
Well, then none of that's going to happen. That's still, that's still.
I want to say my, what I'm going with is, why would you, if that's your second home, why would you ever get a driving license?
Because they were not living in the house in Cleveland anymore.
They were living.
They were renting that and going to pass it on to their son. And so they were living at the lake. And when the driver's license came up to be renewed, you know, what is your address?
And, and Ryan's folks come over all the time. Ryan's folks come over all the time where they have Joyce pull this up and tell me is there a house on this property in Cleveland County? I mean, they do it all the time. We pull it up and we look and we're like, nope, that one's in Randolph. Or nope, that one's in, you know, wherever, wherever. So it does help having that access to it. I, I think anytime we can better ourselves, it's the thing to do and I'm not, I'm not telling y'all.
So, 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 so if you say, well, my, I'm giving it to my son. So give it to my son. I mean, I can say, hey, I'm going to give my house to my son and I'm not going to pay taxes on it, I guess, which, so just because you say something don't mean nothing. It's got to be a title change.
That's right.
So, so, so it still goes back to that first home, second home.
That's right.
Uh, I'd just like to keep an eye on that.
We do. We do.
And honestly, it doesn't, that doesn't affect us. And that's one reason we can't use their information is because I don't care where you live.
We're just bigger, you know, we're going to taxes.
Yeah, I understand. I, I, I'm going on something else. I, I, you're doing the funnest.
That's why I'm saying if those things, if those things were an overlay to my maps, then guess what? Now we're able to say, hey, Joe Smith moved to Weedaw last week and we immediately put that in a change form and say, y'all got to go see this house, see who's living there.
Right.
Okay?
I understand.
Yeah.
And what, and what's got to look up again? It don't even look who's living in that house. If their address is not in Cleveland County, at that point it goes to two. It don't go to one.
Well, it, not by the state law. State law says that you can own several houses.
And all of them be my primary residence?
But you can't, they can't be your primary residence. There has to be one primary and then you can have two or three at class three, which is ten percent. But if anytime during that year's period you rent it, someone else lives in it, it then goes to class two at twenty percent. So we can't.
All I'm trying to say is you can't, it's just say you have a house in another county.
You're going to pay taxes in our county on your other house.
But what I'm saying is, are you, are you doing, are you paying an exemption down in that other county? Are you paying, what, what level are you paying there?
It'll catch up with you.
Yeah, it's going to catch up with you because let me tell you what happens. If we have someone that moves from Florida and Florida's real good about doing this, if one of our people moved to Florida, they pick up the phone and they say, hey, Joyce, we have a resident here that's moving into our county. Do they have a homestead currently in your county? Yes, sir, they do.
Okay.
And they take them off. We do the same thing.
I like to pay my taxes and ask them for insurance.
I want everybody to have the same. That's right. Fair and equitable is what we work on, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Crystal, what the, what you got in your system and you get all the new addresses comes through you. How much of a benefit could you be to the board registrar or if that even makes sense?
Well, I mean, we would share all of our layers that we have. We'd share all of our G I S data now. You know, Joyce and I talk about this a lot because her parcel data, her flyover data, you know, the thing, the layers that I use aren't updated every day. They're not, some of them, the flyers, flyers are ten years. So that our layers, our address points are updated every day. So, you know, if we work with them, it could be that we say, hey, you know, every six months or every quarter once annually, we'll send updated address points that we have added from our database. But yes, what I have would be very beneficial to them because it's address points.
Yeah.
And centering the road lines, roads.
Could we do that? I mean, there's no legal reason we couldn't do that, right?
That's correct.
Well, we don't have any way to put that in our system. So you, because we don't have G I S. So she could, she could get them to shake off, but I have no way to put it in my voting file.
That's correct. Do you have to have the proper software to run it?
And that's that $250,000 she's talking about to set up the initial thing that the state's paying for on yours' behalf. That is the big part. The maintenance is nothing. It's that, that big chunk of software that they're giving you for free.
About a year or something.
Well, what about, okay, so we do this till May of twenty twenty five or whatever. He said he was going to give us all our information and all our stuff back. Could you take what he gives back and maybe provide something to the board registrar?
Talking to me?
Yeah.
I couldn't, I'm not a G I S specialist. Just our address data points that we add to our map is enough for a full time person. So you would probably need someone just to, just to be a G I S specialist. I don't, I, what, what we do, we don't use Arc G I S or some, some G I S software to issue these points. It's strictly based off Arcad software that they've built that's manageable for us. So as far as like district lines, I mean, someone in his office may be technical enough to do that. And if they use it on a daily basis like my software, I can manipulate mine pretty well because I, I know it that well. So if you had somebody technical enough to do it, potentially, I mean, if you had the software, in short, yes, you can do that.
I think it usually will be, once you complete, we hit renew the contract, then they're going to shut that software down.
Well, the two home software you have to remember is not the maintenance. That software is updated every four months, every six months, every year. And if you're not updating that software, then you get sure it's not usable.
I think probably, and I think probably as an overlay, it would be easier for me to use our software than it would be Crystal's because of the overlay. If it was an overlay, then they log into the G I S and they have their overlay and a special login where they're the only ones that see that. And they can see that as district lines and know where those houses are. And it, it's, it's an overlay. That's why I asked him the questions that I asked him. If it's an overlay, then why can't it come on top of ours? And, and that would, that would be just taking the data after July 2025, if that's what it is, if it's an overlay and taking that amount and just laying it over. The only time you're going to have a problem is when the district lines change because we have all data.
Or you add or take away addresses.
That's correct.
But what he was saying, when we read district, we got to give him that, we got to pay for that, give it to him. And then he was also saying that he wouldn't be able to tell you which district you were in. Is that what he said?
No, I don't, I didn't get that. I'm sure that he didn't, he didn't.
He would tell you which district you were supposed to be in.
He would read the line, he would just go straight in and he'd.
Yeah, he'd know where, he'd know which district. I'd say.
What's that data idea? And we can tell what district you're in.
I think where we're getting at and, and, you know, things are changing and we've moved to a new age and where board registrars are, you know, a part time folks and we appreciate them. And, but in a lot of cases, people who can do part time work, most of them are retired and and I don't mean that disrespect, but I mean, you're an age where you didn't have as much computer opportunity as what's.
I was blessed that I did, but what you're trying to say is, and I, I agree, is that most registrars are probably mid fifties and up. You know, we've got one lady in one of the counties is the last George Voss appointee in state government, but she's still a registrar. But, you know, we just don't have the technical ability or the software. I mean, our computers are linked to something else. I don't have access to go in and manipulate software and do all that kind of stuff. It's just not there.
We wouldn't have this opportunity. We're talking about this being paid by the state right now. From the, until 2025, that opportunity may not be there later.
Well, I just think, I mean, I just want y'all to be aware that that's what we're moving to. And in some counties, they have a lot. They, the counties are, have the funding, are bigger funding than we have, to have more than just four registrars to help keep all this election stuff going. So it's just something for you all to consider. But, you know, $10,000 a year, $10,000 for more, less that you got to put up, you know, in your regular system, yes, sir. And that, in my business, I mean, he's just storing addresses and locations and district lines. That's all he's doing. Yeah, but he would possibly clean up, clean up what you have. Yeah, because then when Crystal issued a new address, she, he still going to have to go back to her to get that new address or what he's got, it's not going to be accurate.
And that's great. Most of the time when, like, when Joyce, Joyce and I share each other's information, so we do it periodically a day. But I think from what I'm understanding is his main thing is the software that they can use, that they can manipulate. They can look, they can search, they can.
Can, can you not just get on record here like I do at home? Go to, go to Joyce's website, go to G I S. You can type in an address, you can type that parcel number, you can type in a name. It will pop up on the computer and show you that, that property and lines, roads.
Possibly. I don't know. We use Google Maps some, we try to do that and you know, we haven't gotten closer. We jumped in the car, ran out to the property and see where they live.
Well, it used to a lot. It used to happen a lot.
We haven't done it really recently. I've been doing this seven years. We haven't done one since I've been here. But I know I've talked to people in Randolph and even with G I S, it's, you know, they get people moving in all the time. Even if that is, it's a pretty tentative deal. They'll tell them, oh, good thing, you know, that we've got all our own.
Well, y'all know that manufactured homes disappear in the middle of the night the same way they arrive. And so they, they get an address and then six months later, that house doesn't really exist.
And you give, even if their dad doesn't mean they're registered to vote.
That's correct.
There's two different.
That's correct.
Two different things here. He still is not going to.
No.
Feed with the information you're feeding him.
Not. We can only tell him who the owner is of that property.
That's all we do. He's a totally different ballgame.
But if a person comes in to register to vote, he gets an address and that, that's going to put, when he gets that address, it's going to show him exactly where he's at. Of course, y'all, y'all know most of the time where that's at.
Generally, we're not creating a lot of new areas, new roads or new subdivisions or anything like that in our county right now. But who knows, you know, if they scrub all quicker, you know, it became a little town, you know, then we might. So we don't necessarily want anybody on. So we don't necessarily want anybody on, but yeah, but, you know, anyway, it's, it's, it's just a two. You know, twenty-five, who knows what they may have and may not have.
Would y'all, would, would y'all like this to each other down in this county? Work session, I mean, next meeting, when you wanna wait?
I'd prefer to wait.
Okay.
I'd like for the next meeting and must do a little bit more research. I think it's a good thing. I think that.
The more you wait, the more you act forget. Just want y'all to be conscious of that.
Just make sure we're running backup because the more tools they have, because I know there's people that are still voting that don't live here.
Well, we've come a long way in.
But you don't, you know, you have no clue because they still actually do have an address here. They haven't changed their license.
Right. Or they had here a couple of weeks ago, and her husband had died in Georgia. And she said, my husband has passed away, and I pulled him up, he's still an active voter. And, you know, we had not gotten, and we don't usually, if they die somewhere outside of Alabama, and I'm just in Alabama, we get a report every week from uh, public health.
Can you share that?
And, and so I had her fill out a form and I was able to make him as disqualified.
And they have lived in, you know, Georgia, why not? We have so many that, you know, that's what they got.
Right.
They got Georgia, they got, you know, at the end, which.
Had a guy the other day, um, I won't get his name, he was running mine, y'all would know him, but yeah. We got a call from a registrar in Tennessee up close to the Kentucky line or somewhere. And said that he had to report that this guy had registered to vote in their county. I pulled him up, he's still active in our county. And so we sent him the information they did and he came in a few more days after that. And I said, hey, he moved to Tennessee? He said, well, no, he said, but you know how it is, went down to store, talked about election and so I just registered to vote. And I said, well, when you come back, you're gonna have to restructure because you can't vote here anymore. And he said, oh, okay. So, uh, he still owns his house and I guess he just goes up there to be with his kids every so often.
What I'm saying is our administrator could write that down and bring it up at our next month's work session.
Okay.
So we won't forget.
Would you do that for the police?
And I'll have it all in file. You know, I'm just here to answer questions. We're gonna keep doing what we're doing no matter what.
I just think it's a good tool for them.
Ma'am?
I think it would be a good tool for them.
I think so. I mean, I've talked to people that have it and it seems to be useful and, you know, uh, the only, only time that, you know, we could've, could've been a problem was when we changed, you know, Doc Fincher left our area thing into one district. And so if it ever goes back when we have to split a district again, then that could be, you know, where it would be useful. Or if we uh, you did, you know, within twenty-four years, that kind of thing, it'll be helpful there, so. Just two.
All right, let's uh, you know where you move on?
Yeah.
Cher, you got anything? What about our corner?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
It won't be long, just real quick. I went up, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about, talking about the vehicle and I remember what y'all said about Crystal's. I called her, came up and measured that and her car's gonna be really too short to use. Uh, got back on the website that Lee had provided for me and the two thousand seventeen Expedition was back on the website, which means most likely somebody put a hold on it and didn't follow through. But they have dropped tremendously in the vehicles there. Um, none of the explorers that they have are still on the website. I think they've got five Toppos and this one Expedition is still on there. Uh, realistically, for what I do, I really need something the Expedition size for just a, you know, I had to go, go down there and get something like a Toppo. We've been really on work for what we need to work for. Toppo's got a hundred, I mean, the Expedition's got a hundred forty-seven thousand miles on it, but I talked to a guy again today and he said everything, get your bike, it was, you know, all state maintained, taken care of by the state, so shouldn't be good. It's listed at fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, everything else that you're looking at is listed. All the Toppos are, I think the cheapest Toppo's saying is around thirty, thirty-one thousand on there.
What's the mile on that?
Uh, anywhere from ninety, ninety-five was the lowest amount of miles up to about a hundred and seventeen thousand.
Okay.
So, not a lot of difference there, but, you know, looking at use for my office and what I need for, I really think the Expedition would work better. I like to have them on lower miles, but I think that would be the best operating.
And so how many vehicles do you have on your own road that you need?
Got two, got the Suburban and then the Amellos that's been out commissioned for several months. Tracy did, reached out to me a few weeks ago and he was wanting to know about the Amellos. Said that they were needing to sleep out of the Amellos if we weren't gonna use it anymore. And I told him about, but it's strictly up to y'all if we took it out. Yeah, y'all were talking about the tonne surplus and that, um, if they would.
Well, they get it through, right?
Yeah.
They get it, so we just surplus it back to them.
Yes.
Right now, I guess you've got insurance, we've got insurance on it.
Yeah, it's sitting there insured, I'm sure, that's far as I know of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, I have to know, I told him as far as I was concerned, get wherever you needed to, but that'd be up to y'all.
Still with me before they tear it off, yeah.
Yeah. So the vehicle you have, you could surplus out, say, like, the one you have.
Yeah, surplus it up.
And then put that money back towards the Expedition. What car do you, I mean, do you have any idea what that vehicle is worth?
I don't. Uh, I know it uses a lot of oil. I have a lot of oil too, about two or three weeks and I have to add more to it on a weekly basis. Uh, and it's just, you know. Still, do you have any more stuff?
Let me add a little information on that. The uh, reason you said that change in inventory is because as the day of wood auctions come up.
And that's December the sixth.
And it's coming up December the sixth, so after December the sixth, there's a chance it may not be there.
Right. More space of this one because it has been on and off. Now, I did talk to the guy today, and this, just so y'all know, I know we got a vote on this at the next meeting, but the way this works, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, Ryan is the only one that can actually fill out the purchase order on it, correct?
That's right.
So what we'll have to do is we can go in and cart it. I can go in online, Lee can go in online, we can cart it there. That'll hold it for seven straight days. That gives us a week to get it purchased. He told me, he said, when you come down here, you bring the check, he said, you can, as long as you've got it held, you can come look at it, bring it back. And then when y'all send us a check, we'll mail you the top. So we can take the check in hand or we could go pick it up and then mail the check and let them mail the top. He did tell me that if we need it longer than seven days, that we had to call him. Ryan would have to call him, let him know that, hey, we need to place another seven-day hold on it. And they would hold it another seven days. But I think the way I understand it, you may know more about this than I do, but about fourteen days was the longest hold, you know.
By the one, by the one holds.
Yeah, you can give them one hold of it.
So it would be, if we decide to move forward, you could have a check that, that can go in, right?
Which, yeah, that's two weeks. Now, we could, and I, whatever y'all wanna do, we could hold it. We could go in sometime tomorrow, put a hold on it, they give us seven days. Then we could request another hold, which would get us past, that would get us right to the meeting.
All right, y'all want to put this on?
I don't put it on. I don't put it on.
Everybody getting consent or what?
I'm good with the consent.
Yes, sir. Can, you said you can put a hold on it and you can go pick it up?
No, you can, well, you can put a hold on it, but you can extend the hold after the seven-day hold.
But I thought you said you could go pick it up. If you could go pick it up and bring it back and get us, get somebody to check it out before you purchase it.
I don't think we can do that.
You can go look at it.
You can go down there and look at it.
You can take, like, if we go with your equipment, we'll take it with us. And, but, yeah, you can't do that.
We can't drive it off the lot and bring it back up there.
I have some routine, you know. I thought you said I.
I thought I would. No, I don't know, but you can.
They'll let you drive it around the lot, they wouldn't want to.
Okay. I thought I would.
Well, I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right, put this on consent agenda. What, what do you, how you label that as a?
Purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement?
Purchase of form.
Okay.
Do we wanna put a hold on it?
And then check it out. I mean, you do need to go check it out and then just.
Lay your name to your heart.
Person didn't take it for a reason.
All right, I, you don't even know the lot you're into, do you?
Okay.
Well, that's what, and I would, I would recommend, like, whenever you go look at it, that they send David with him with a computer.
That's what I was saying.
Plug it up all the way down there and see what code it just wrote and check it out like that. So say, send, send David with him and everything you do.
Okay.
And then that next time you go back, we want you to go with the check for everybody.
Okay. So if we do the hold, we probably have to extend the hold at least one time to get it past meeting time.
Yeah. I think it's connected on the front end. But if it's a check, it's not gonna be ready.
Yeah.
But you do, first you need to go check it out.
Right. So what I'll do, if you want, I'll get with you tomorrow, we can put the hold on it. Because he told me we could, we could release it and that's what happened to it before. And I think when I sent y'all that email, it wasn't on the website at that point in time. Somebody held it and then released it, I'm assuming.
Is the VIN number on the website?
Yes, VIN number is on the website.
Take the VIN number and take it to the fourth store and run it and see what comes up.
I'll do that.
Because if there've been recalls or they're getting work.
You'll be able to do that. I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
And no other thing that I've got.
A bunch of recalls.
At least I told you that y'all, uh, keeping up my, are wanting to know about my calls. That's the year-to-date, I'm at forty-four calls. That's from January one till today. That's forty-four calls. Where you're struggling, I think my first year was forty-six, my second year was forty-six, third year was a bad COVID year, that was seventy-four, where last year we were fifty-three. And now we're sitting here at forty-four.
All right.
Staying pretty busy, can't handle it.
So that fourteen days that you're gonna have, with the time you put it on hold, basically give you second hold, second extension on it? That's only gonna take us to exactly our commission meeting date.
So you think it'd be worth it just to wait until Thursday to put it on hold again?
Well, we can try, yeah, we can try to wait a couple of days.
I said, make that phone call tomorrow and just say, hey, look, here's the situation. We got a vote on it on this day and I need help to them.
Right.
Yeah. I'll talk to the same guy, I've, every time, I've called down there twice, I think his name was Claude.
Yeah, available one, he's, he's the one down there.
Super nice guy.
I really, they feel it's called up the situation.
Yeah.
And you send somebody down there with the point down there and check it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I figure y'all got any questions?
Nope.
The money could not hit the budget?
Yeah, well, whenever the budget's.
We never even done it, so.
Whenever they put it in the budget, we ain't saying we can go back and amend that.
So we need a resolution to amend that budget, put the money in there.
Yeah, whatnot.
And you also need a resolution to surplus. Is, is, uh, what's it, Suburban?
Yes, O-four Suburban and O-five Chevrolet Amellos.
And to give the EMS back there.
We're gonna give them that surplus and back.
So we can add some.
I suppose do it all.
Surplus, what that EMS is?
The O-five Amellos back to equipment and everything.
And that can surplus really very well.
We still do with the consent, right? Thank y'all. All right, thank you. This for, did I ask you, you got something?
Go ahead, Ms. Ford. Hey, I, I just wanted to take a minute. I know in wanting, uh, from the last work session of the last meeting that y'all had, you discussed, uh, a two-dollar additional pay raise for, um, particular positions throughout the county. And I'm just here to, to try to take some of the liability off the county with this because I think we might want to think about a restructure, either going with a new pay scale study of some sort or maybe even a scale, uh, a step raise sort of uh, situation to eliminate any liability that the county is gonna come up with, uh, for this. I, I just, I just personally, seeing this being a, a big deal down the line, uh, if we're picking and choosing who we can give two-dollar raises to. Because I'll be telling you, as an administrator, I, I left forty-four thousand dollars on the table in two budgets. Rolled that over into this year's budget, so that reduced what y'all were having to pay this year toward my budget. If we can just take what's in our budget and give our people a raise at any point in time, I don't think that's a good decision. Because I would be crazy not to give my people the, the money. I mean, that, that, that sounds like a good thing. Ryan, if you had extra, wouldn't you give it to your people? I mean, if you could.
Okay.
That's, that's what you do. And I just think that we're opening up some, some liability where this is concerned. And I just want you to consider that when you're, when you're moving toward this and discussing this. And if there's something I can do, if it's, if it's getting outside the source. I know at one time, Auburn University was willing to, to come out and do a pay skill study for us at very little cost. And if I need to, to uh, seek that out to, to help the county, I'd be happy to. Do whatever I can to help y'all to determine. I'm not saying that folks are not worth a pay raise. That's not what I'm saying. But I'm saying that we can't pick and choose a couple of people from, from each department and not have a liability issue with the other people in those same departments and other departments in the county. That's all I'm saying to you. And I know that you've probably already had this discussion with the attorney and he's probably already enlightened you about some of those liabilities that it will open you up to. But I just want to say that as an administrator who has control over only the budgets that you approve, that it seems like to me if, if another department can use their budgeted money for other lines to pay for a pay raise, then I should also be able to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Crystal?
Okay, so I hope I can read my jitter jabber. So I'm kinda going on, um, exactly what Joyce is talking about. I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I kinda heard what the situation was. So I kinda wanted to talk to you guys about the nine-one aspect of it and to, to encourage you, um, well, actually, there's two things. So if we, if we are looking at departments that have high turnover rates, that can't fill positions, I feel like especially our department, our nine-one department, should be considered. Um, I have been a full-time director now approximately six years. And in those six years, um, I sat with Emily Brown today and we went through our employees. We have had fifty-four employees leave in six years. And so those are none, those are none of our current employees. Those are all employees that have left and those have held anywhere from temporary positions to part-time positions to full-time positions. So I would, I would ask you, if we're considering those with high turnover rates, if you would consider ours? But in sitting and thinking about what the solution is in a fair, equitable way, I can't help but think of this step program. You know, we do, um, our department does evaluations on a yearly basis and we submit those evaluations, we sit with our employees in August and September and we discuss their goals, their, um, their, um, issues, anything that they have that we want to consider. We sit and we talk it up about them. So when you're considering, you know, what the best solution is, um, I, I mean, of course, everybody has their opinion, but being in it so long, it means a lot to an employee when you sit down with them and you say, okay, what's going on with you? I see what you're doing. Here's, here's the things that I see that need to be corrected. Let's work on this. Let's train on this. Let's set goals for you at these capacities. And that means a lot to an employee. Um, it makes them feel valued and of course, in the back, we do everything possible that we can do to hold on to the people that we have. Um, so, you know, I would ask that you consider this step program. And it doesn't mean that yearly you can't put a hold on a raise during the step program, but it means that you can give every single employee the same opportunity as you do any other. So, you know, if you see that, you know, in the budget, this stuff, it's just not gonna be a good year for us and we're gonna have to hold off step rate, we're gonna have to hold on step raises. But also, it would give the department heads the ability to say, hey, I see what you're doing and you've done an excellent job this year and we're gonna move you a step up. And, you know, within your step raise, uh, uh, program, you can do a policy that states all of your, um, concerns and actually lay those out. So step raises have to be approved by the commission or you can only move two steps up in the plan during a fiscal year, whatever the, the, the idea or the want it is that you're trying to, um, to do. That can be implemented inside the policy itself. So I kinda wanted to make mention of that, I don't know if you've thought about that or not thought about it, or whatever, but I think that would be a good thing, um, especially for employee morale. Because like I said, our department, I know, is not being considered for the two-dollar, and we have just as many problems as the other departments. And, um, in saying that, you know, we always self-reflect, what are the, what are the reasons why these people are leaving? And, you know, I can't speak on behalf of anyone else, I can only speak on behalf of my department. But when you run a twenty-four-hour facility, your first reason people are leaving is because of better hours. They want the Monday through Friday, and they want holidays off. And just quite frankly, I don't blame them, that's what I wanted as a mother and having them kids. And so it's very, very hard to find someone that will stick with you long enough to say, okay, I'm willing to do those every other weekend shifts. I'm willing to do Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, Thanksgiving Day, I'm willing to sit with you through snowstorms and tornadoes, and, you know, all while my family sits at home. And that's just the nature of our job, and that's primarily the, the main reason is better hours, second is better pay. Is that that job out there is not for the faint of heart, and it is very stressful. So, you know, they can go to McDonald's and make fifteen dollars an hour, or they can go to Target, make fifteen dollars an hour, but the ones that you have that stay with you, stay because it's their community, it's convenient for them, and it works with their lifestyle. But those are just a handful of people, so, um, and I, I listed less stress. Uh, like I said, it's a stressful job, they're dealing with all kinds of things, just like the jail deputies and everyone else stills with a lot of stress. It's a lot of stress on them, and, um, statistics say that a burnout on the dispatcher is three years, so that's max, a three-year career in dispatch. And so some of ours, we were lucky, and a half of our staff has been here over five years, so we're lucky with that. But the other side of the staff, let's just take, what is it, November? October, we opened up a position, we hired three people, we have one that stayed. Two of them, one of them couldn't do it, and the other one decided it just wasn't for her, she, she wasn't gonna do well on night shift. And that's what we continue to see. That's where the fifty-four employees come in that you're losing, um, in the past six years. Is that if you find someone, we can't keep them because we can't pay them enough, we can't give them the hours they want, and all the other things, but... So, I know I'm jibber-jabbering a lot, but in, in thinking of that, you know, I, I talked to Emily Brown, and I actually reached out to Wayne to say, hey, you know, I, I recall that he changed all of his positions to full-time positions, and whether that helped or hurt, either way, I'm not really sure if it did or not. But I'm, I'm asking you to, to consider, um, in the, uh, meeting, if I can consolidate my organizational chart and add another full-time employee and do away with three of, uh, temporary slots. Because I can't get someone in here that I can't promise hours to. I can't, uh, it is extremely hard to say, okay, I'm not sure what shift you're gonna be on, I'm not, I can't offer you twenty-four hours, I can't... Because our budget constraints don't allow that. So, we sat this morning and we talked. So if we add a full, if we add a full-time position and do away with the slots, it almost washes out because we have such turnover. So we're paying for physicals, we're paying for training, and when we train, we hold them here more days during the week because we want them to retain that. So the longer they're here training, the more exposed they are to the calls and we can train them. So we think that you're probably looking at five to six thousand dollars more to do consolidate, do away with those three temp positions and do the full-time. Now, I will tell you that, um, right now, we have five, we have a part-time and four temp. And if possible, I do want to keep two of the temp slots, and let me tell you why. We have previous employees that leave that say, hey, if you're ever in need of something, let me know. So if you ever, you know, if we have sickness, COVID was a great example. You know, if we have more than half of our staff go down, we can't physically man every, and do everything, so we would have to roll those calls to different agencies. So we always try on our org chart to keep enough people that we can be functioning, we can always function in any circumstance. So if possible, I want to keep two of the temp slots and keep a couple of our previous employees that have said, hey, I'll cover a shift if you get an emergency, or, you know, I need extra money or whatever it is. So the request is consolidate three of the temporary slots and make a full-time slot. So I didn't know if that would be something you would consider, um, and if you, um, Emily Brown may have something that she wants to add to that. Um, but the difference, you know, we pay our temporary part-time's about fourteen thousand dollars a year. It costs our, it costs me with our pay and overtime, approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for a full-time employee. So I sat with her and said, okay, you know, I try to be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars that we, uh, expend on our salary and benefits, and we try to save it in our means, and we feel like that it will wash out. We, we are pretty confident in the number of people that we have to turn over so often and so quickly, um, that we feel like it will be more beneficial to just hire that one full-time person so we can say, hey, that's a full-time person, and you're here.
So you're asking that a resolution be added?
Yes.
Would any commissioners consider adding that resolution according to her request?
You, you were just talking about that it's a five thousand to six thousand dollars difference is all?
We, yes, that's our approximation, is that the washout, because we're hiring, I think we've hired probably six to eight people already this year, maybe ten people. So we're paying for them to train, we're paying for their training, we're paying for them to go to training, we're paying for their physicals and all the other things that we have to pay, um, right off the bat. And we also, that not position, we're going to adjust their overtime so they don't get as much overtime as the other folks do, so that will help us on helping it wash out.
So you basically, what, do you have someone that you can put in that position?
We do not, not at this time we don't, but we, that's our hope that the next round that we hire, we can say, hey, we're hiring for full-time instead of that temporary slot. We can't get anybody to work, um, and if we do find somebody, they need hours, they work because they have to, they need hours. And so, you know, like I said, the budget constraints, we can't say, okay, hey, we're gonna give you twenty-four hours a week. We can't, we don't have the means for that because of our other positions that we're holding open.
I'd say we put it on the agenda.
New business.
New business.
All I can say is, is when we talk about our budget, we just had a budget. If the folks people come and put stuff in front of us, does it mean that's what we're gonna do?
That's correct.
Those things are gonna be voted on.
Yeah.
We're not even into our budget really now. I think some of these things should have been brought up during the budget time, in my opinion. And, uh, going forward, uh, I'm not even just going to do two and a half, I asked to go to three. I don't see all the new money that people's talking about for all this money, if it is in your budget. I would want it on new business, do you think anybody wants to put some in there?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, raises, and, and it seems like nobody has yet, so...
We don't look for that.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I think that it's, I think that it is, um, I think that the department heads are, they just want it to be fair across the board because, you know, I have a staff of thirteen, and it is so hard, especially for my group and the ones that have trouble hiring anyways. And quite honestly, it's the morale of the crew. So when they're hearing that another department's being considered for two dollars, and I, I completely understand, I know where you're coming from. But I feel like I wouldn't be, um, I wouldn't be doing my justice to my employees if I didn't come and I didn't say, hey, we have a problem too. So if you're considering that, I would, uh, I would ask that you consider us.
Our budget, we have a good budget this year, we don't have a lot of playing room there to be comfortable with. So, you know, we have to be looking at that, but like friends, it is big, you know, that's gotta come off somewhere else, you know, so...
If y'all will, if y'all will come to the chair every minute, because Mr. Hendricks is really good at it, not any disrespect, usually we have that, but we just kind of got three or four folks, thank you, one time, Mr. Hendricks.
Uh, so let me get this straight, you wanna do away with one part-time person and hire a full-time person?
I want to do away with one part-time position and two temporary positions, so that's three positions to hire a full-time position. So currently, right now, I want to keep my eight full-timers because they're the ones that cover the shifts. So right now, in our organizational part, we have one part-time and four temp. So actually, that would be one temp that I would keep. But I want to do away with a part-time position and two of the temp slots, three of the temp slots.
I agree with Mr. O one time, don't find me need to look at this right now.
But we still ask, we have one commissioner's asking, we got a new business, considering.
New business.
Okay. New business. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that started about a covered.
I think I want to piggyback off.
Yes, sir.
One thing that's said. I just wish y'all would consider, uh, if you give a raise to one department, you know, or not one department, but just a few employees that you would consider, all employees, uh, my top four employees at the office, that's sixty-two years of experience. Like Wayne, he's got, I mean, Jaber, do you know Jaber's? He's been the last two months.
Six.
Six, okay, well, if this, if this is. Right, if this is implemented, then he's gonna have, Jaber's making nearly what I got a part making that's been there, or it's been in the county for a year. Uh, this ain't, I mean, it ain't right, you know, if you're gonna do it for one, you need to do it for all.
Thank you.
Could I say something?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hill, uh, you got it, Fuller?
I'm, I'm looking at this, uh, myself and Ms. Cobb, we take heat big time about the county road situation. And we can't maintain the roads with ragtag road crew, you know? So that's where all this came from. Now, Ms. Fuller and John back there, I have, I don't get involved in your internal stuff. I don't know what's going on within your department, so to speak.
I understand.
But I do work closely with Lee, and I know what's going on in his department. And what this is aimed at is to get the best skilled people we can possibly get and maintain ones that we have, you know? We've had two, I think two of your key people have just walked out. But that's what it's all about. Now, like I said, what, what I'm looking at, me and Ms. Cobb should have a heavy load as far as the road, getting the roads repaired, you know? So that's, that's where all this came from.
Okay.
I want to be able to keep the skills that we have and be able to hire highly skilled people.
Mr. Hendricks?
I would like to say that I'm also in that category, we're at a point I'm swept out, but I get just as many calls as been to the.
Well, we got more mileage, that's what I was pointing at.
Yeah.
The mileage.
Come to the chair if you have another question. All right, I understand where we're at, I think the department heads just express their feelings where they're at, and I think that's understood, I think you expressed where you're at, and we're just trying to find what we can do to make our situation better. I think everybody's looking for some answers, so sometimes if you tug, tug one way, it's gonna, if you tug at the sheet one way, it's gonna tug it from the other side, and it's gonna cause problems. Mr. Hendricks?
Okay, at last month's meeting, we, we tasked our HR to, to try to come up with some solutions, and, uh, I don't know if there is a solution, but can we hear from her?
Yes, yes.
Okay, from what I understood, you tasked me to do, look at positions that were hard to fill. So you mentioned deputy positions, and of course, I already had the road department and then corrections. So I just did the same thing for those three departments, for the positions that are hard to fill. I kept them on the same pay grade, and I took them up steps. So if they're still staying on our table, on the table table, they're still on there, it's just that I took them up steps. And then so you can see I put the differences down and what the total cost is gonna be. So when you're looking at it, you make a decision, if they're, uh, the proposed step is F, they can go up a step, or they can go down a step, I can just take them up and down on the table. And like I said, I did this for, um, the sheriff's departments for their deputies, for the road department, for the physicians we spoke about there, which was the assistant road engineer down, and then for the jail, I did the corrections officer positions.
Ms. Hendricks?
I mean, is it your opinion that all these jobs are harder to fill?
Some of these jobs are harder to fill than others. Crystal does have a point, she has a lot of turnover, and it is very hard to get the temporary positions in for her also. I do a lot of paperwork in and out when we hire those temporary positions. Um, I've seen a huge increase in corrections officers that are leaving and then we're rehiring for. So I, we seem to be able to hire for these positions, but we cannot keep all these positions. I think it'd be a more accurate way to describe that.
So, yes, so in your opinion, if we try to do something with the road department, you think we should do something with all of these people? Or is this, I guess tell us what we're looking at, is, is this your recommendation, or is this just the figures you throw together?
No, it's figures that I did based on what you tasked me with with the last meeting. I do agree that these positions are hard to keep, most of these positions are hard to keep people in. But I don't know that I would say I'm actually making a recommendation, I'm just showing you where I can put people on their pay range for a position.
Ms. Shaw, do you have a question?
So, uh, I guess across these right here, I think when we, when, I think when Mr. Hill brought this up was, like in the road department, you were still gonna spend your budget on these other two, the hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, hundred and twenty-four thousand, that's gonna be new money out of the general fund, right? For the sheriff's department? So that's another hundred and twenty-something.
But that's, that's gonna be outside of the budget.
All right, so to answer that question, portion of that, if you're still with that, it's coming out here, is right? If it's out here, it's gonna come out of the general.
Correct, but he does not have that in his budget to put up his employees for this, this year.
Okay.
He don't have it in his budget if we hire people. Okay, okay, he, he's just using money that he don't have people for right now, but to, if this does what we're intended to do, he will have those people and he won't have the money.
Ms., Ms. Cobb, you had a question earlier?
The, the whole key thing, if you add this up, we don't have, we don't have the money without putting us out on the grid, that's the main thing.
Okay.
Uh, just add it up.
Yes, ma'am.
One response on that, this is for, for the year, right, how much did it cost for a year?
Yes, I did a best of.
So it is not gonna be quite as much, just because it's not, what, gonna be quite the whole year of work implemented? Also, with him not having his employees' positions off field, that will offset some of the expense of it, so it wouldn't be quite this expense, but it is, the initial employees are not in this budget, so...
Ms. Cobb?
Also, you don't have none of them here, so you're, you're, there's a, it's a big picture when we started out. I didn't have the money, and he's not there.
And those are not exclusive either, because even my department, I've got, I have a temp that I can't get money.
You have something, she?
Uh, two questions. Is this good benefits? And my second question is pertaining to what you said. You don't need to do a budget off of, well, he's got it right now, but he might not have it in six months, that, that's not the way to do a budget.
And if it does what you, what you intend for it to do, which is fill positions and keep positions.
You gotta fill up a new one.
You are gonna have to have money in the budget. And this is not exclusive to just the departments that we spoke about, I know that, you know, I have, I have two that work for me directly. I got one that's gonna be out for several weeks, and I can't hire a temp position, I can't get anybody to occupy that position. It's just, uh, it's, uh, it's across the county departments, probably somewhere similar.
Any more questions for any of them? Yes, ma'am.
Not on this, not on this, but I do have a question, I don't know if it'll be Emily or your question. What, when they have the carryover, where is that money at? Like, I know, like Wayne and them, they had a large carryover, I think, where, where is that money, is it? Typical, like in the sheriff, he stays in the budget.
Right.
Okay. Why is it showing up?
Because that money actually gets put back into their new budget in the form of the appropriation, but it's been added back to their budget on that point. So that, that part has not been added back to their budget yet for this year because we worked all back to December to do that because we don't know how much in the form of controls that we're gonna have until December, so we have to be able to save the bills for September. So if they have additional money left over, that would add it to, that's probably a slump of what we're saying is, is additional expense that we're trying to pull.
All right, so, so if they had carryover in twenty-twenty-two, that carryover is twenty-twenty-four.
Right, yes.
You're, you're talking, you're talking about sheriff's department?
Sheriff's department, I mean, right on.
Sheriff's department is what I'm, I'm talking about, because I know that we had several conversations, but you're not seeing the loyalty line. but you don't see an ability line.
Yeah, we had a little bit in 2022, the sheriff's department, but more, I think, we, we never saw it in the appropriation line in 2023.
I'll definitely check that, that it's gonna wreck his department, then certainly.
Just a word session, you go first.
Because they're, they're not studying their money.
They should too.
She is correct, it shows up in the appropriation line, but I, I don't think we ever had a budget.
And I said, we have it closed out FY23, and we won't until the same similar show, so that can certainly still be a part of the numbers that we figured before. So what I'm saying is, if your FY22 had something left over, I can still add it to your FY23 budgets because we're not closed out for that year yet.
In breakage, yeah, in breakage years, it was done, you know, it takes a few months to plug back in years, so around January, February is what was happening again, we've gotta use it to play in the, the last year.
Right, I'm just trying to think of that, because we're talking about budget areas, so I'm starting, I think, we knew that conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Y'all need a break? All right, let's take a little break. Time is. All right, here we go, we go back to our work session. I think we're at a spot now, do y'all have anything or anybody else?
Can I say that I do appreciate what y'all have done for our employees? I think I said that every time that I'm here. So I just want to say thank y'all, I do thank you all individually, personally, I thank you for what you have done. I'm just saying that in light of what has, has gone on, and I, and look, Mr. Hill, I understand that you can't keep the road department, and I also understand that that's where you're gonna get all of your complaints. I understand that, and I'm sorry that that's the way it is for commissioners. But I, I, I think there's a better way for this to get done and it not to cause upheaval across the board. I think there's another way.
We need to find it.
I, and, and I think that, I think we missed a shot when we did the pay skill study, that it wasn't done at that time because everybody in this entire county that works for this entire county would have said, if you'd have said, hey, they were underpaid by five dollars an hour, there wouldn't have been anybody else in the county that would have said disputed that, they would say, yeah, I'm not, I'm not driving a bulldozer for ten dollars an hour, not doing it. I'm just saying that it might be time to think about a different way in which we approach that so that the liability doesn't come back to y'all, because I heard, uh, I think it was, um, Mr. Hendricks said the last time we were here, if there's a lawsuit, that comes from the general fund as well, correct? So we don't want county employees rising up and saying, hey, you're doing something for somebody that you're not doing for me. I'm all about fair and equitable, I'll tell you that, every, that's what my job is, is fair and equitable. And if I can't be, then, then I'm not doing what I'm prescribed by law to do. So I, I just think that I do thank y'all.
All right, move to Ms. Copeland.
Okay, um, of course, the, the pay increase question will be on old business for this month because it was carried forward from last month, just so you're aware of that. Um, I have also done a little research on, um, interest rates, both with local banks, and I'm gonna recommend that we, um, maintain our accounts at Metro. Um, so that will be my recommendation that we get a resolution that we continue to do business with Metro Bank.
I'm sorry, we could have been, but soon, but. Everybody here can see it, okay?
Okay, uh, same. Um, we've also received, I received a, an email from sheriff's department requesting use of employee money and possibility of using employee money for, um, some equipment that would, uh, be for drug testing. Uh, I'm gonna recommend at this point that we hold off and see what the IAC tells us as they come up with more solutions to how we can use that employee money. I know they did send us something about mental health, but that's.
Who was first? Ms. Tom?
Well, we actually just got, we just got an email. So.
That was all about mental health, and they actually.
Well, some of it was, did you get it too?
I couldn't get it to download, there, there's more to it than that email. MCCA, I think, has actually got a paper that you might wanna follow, I can get it to download.
And they, uh, they provided, they come and they provide it, or you just contact them and they provide it to you, but it, it, it gives the different areas that it can be used. It can be used in the sheriff's department.
I think it's for NARCAN or something.
Yeah, NARCAN for a certain. But, but that listed several in there, they got, they've got a guide line.
They've got on there, um, there is a section on the website, I was able to actually, it took some, some trying, but I was able to get to that, they have a sample resolution for the county to pass on what they wanna use that for. They also have a list of manuals that they addressed at this time, and I don't think this is the final word, like, this is the only thing you can use it for. They are saying that it can be used for some mental health services, um, to help with recovery and that kind of thing. And NARCAN is also listed on there, but it didn't list anything related to, like, we were talking about how it offsets some of our expense for medical care, it did not list anything like that. It only listed, like, some mental health type things, whether it's some counseling or some behavioral health kind of things, and NARCAN was a lot of them.
I was there, I'll.
Go ahead.
I was there when you said, so I know that's where that question, I'm gonna kind of, but it'd be soon because I have, I have plans to.
Yes, ma'am, and I've actually, I was able to download all that, so I can actually forward it to you, I just got it today. Um, but it does have that sample resolution, and it, it basically has some blanks for you to fill in, how you're gonna use that money. And then, um, also, um, a list of what all, every county got, and then there was like four things on that section of the website, so I can send that to you as well.
Mr. Hendricks?
I would, I would like to agree, agree on what you recommended to wait because if a thing like the ARPA money, it's gonna change two or three times, so I, I, I would agree with that, I don't know.
Do you already give a waiting on that?
We're not, we're not limited as a column with the wait, I'm just saying, until the IAC says, look, we've, we've told you all we wanna tell you about this, we are done, this is our final decision, this is what our attorneys are telling us. I say that we wait until we get that word from them, because if we can offset county expenses absolutely, if we cannot, then yes, we, we put it into, you know, maybe it's a jury test, maybe it's not, maybe it's behavioral health or mental health. But until that point in time, I, I would recommend that we hold off on that for now.
Thank you, Ms. Goo.
Okay. Um, the next thing is, um, you all overspent the latest version of the inmate housing agreement. So if there was something that you needed to address for that at this point, I'm just telling all of this.
I would like to, uh, once it's signed, the fifteen dollars go to the sheriff's department for the inmates. That, that will be played on that night.
So is that a resolution you can make of that, okay?
I think so, because there was a change in the agreement, and that, the county, you know, they're responsible. Medical expenses, that was not on the original agreement, that was the city, um, paid for their own inmates' medical care, all their city inmates, and that has changed, I know the sheriff has expressed his concerns that it could affect his budget, he has to cover the expenses of medical, medical care for city, city inmates. And that has changed on the, the latest agreement, it does include the county handling that now.
Before you say something?
Say any change.
Do you, come up, come here, sure. So where were you at on that as far as, I mean, has, and nothing's been signed yet, so there's still my housing votes. But the, but the agreement so far is there's a conflict on the first floor?
Uh, I, where is that, there's possible there.
Okay, and it hadn't been that way in the past?
Right.
Okay. Any, do you have questions concerning that, or what you wanna do on that?
What mine was, well, which part?
Now, you said the fifteen dollars would go to the sheriff's department?
Yes.
Is that a problem?
Okay.
With our budget?
So to make sure I understand this, okay, the city.
But they have a sheriff, they only get five dollars of the money.
That was not what we were questioning, we were actually questioning, uh, we are only going to charge the city fifteen dollars, that's what you all charged them, and actually saying all of the things to go to the sheriff's department, not the five dollars that we've been paying for the feeding.
Well, I'd like to, I mean, I thought, I was, I come up to the meeting, I just come, so I come, and, and one of the things that we're saying is, is that the, the commission has looked at trying to give the sheriff money towards feeding the inmates. Why do we wanna, why don't we just take, let the sheriff have the fifteen dollars?
Because we have other expenses other than just the feeding of the inmates. Um, you know, medical is obviously part of it, because you have to divide all of your overhead, not just that portion that's the feeding. If you take all of your inmates and then you see how much it costs to go to jail for you, you have to spread that cost over all the inmate days, not just the amount of inmates.
I think it's just on whether it come to the sheriff's office or if it's been for feeding or medical or.
But there's still.
I get what you're saying, though.
Oh, but if it's paid over and you put in your feeding, well, that should stretch it, but we're not using our, any of that money to pay for the medical and all that.
Okay, Ms. Tom?
John, I apologize, I talked long to you, typically, you don't usually have a lot of medical expense in the past from the, uh, from the city, because they come, our physicianer acted the third day.
In four years, you have received it down.
In the past, you haven't had a lot of medical.
I ain't giving, yes, no, I'm not gonna.
No, because in the past, if, if they were there for a misdemeanor, they, they stayed the city inmate, so if they had to go to the hospital, we call the city.
But now.
And it's a penalty after their second hour hearing, whether it's the first day or there, or the third day, they'd become out of it anyway.
But now, the contract's saying now, if you're in there for a misdemeanor, if you're, you have, we would have to cut that. I, I don't know if that's fair, I don't know if that's fair. Ms. Tom, you still have a floor?
Yeah, uh, but, but if you went back and checked that, that you don't have a lot of those misdemeanors because they run down, correct? So you're, you're, you really don't have, you haven't had, potential, yes, but you also got a potential on your inmate. So it's not like we've had medical problems there in the past.
All right, now, I know, I wanted to say something, I know, Mr. Hendricks, what was I saying? Mr. Hendricks?
Okay, I mean, it's modest, and we had a vote in our contract, there's two contracts floating around. There's the one that the city changed the way they wanted it, and then there's the one that we just spent the fifteen dollars on from thirty-two to fifteen, so we've never, we've never had a vote on the contracts, okay?
Jason sent me, I don't know if y'all got the view, he sent me, when was that, Lisa?
Yeah, I did, I did forward that up to everyone, and that is the, the main change in all of that, without going back and picking every, therefore, and whatever out of the.
Right.
The contract is the check, the check will be from thirty-two to fifteen, and the county will pay the medical costs if they get in a fight the first day they're in there, if they break their leg, if they all of a sudden have.
Whatever.
Whatever, and sometimes they're, sometimes they are kept there, city inmates, for more than three days. I know I see it because of, of paying the fee, I look at the how many days that we're paying.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's, you know, fifty days, it's not always.
I mean, it's hard to tell you.
Let, let me say this, right now, is this coming up, do we vote it on, this ready meeting?
Yeah, we got the contract, we got a vote on it.
All right, so put, we'll put the contract, and you guys read the contract, decide what you can live with and what you can't live with, and then if you, if you do, then y'all can also talk to Jason and make amendments, yes, sir?
Okay, I think the last time we talked about this in the meeting, we tasked the sheriff and, and you and Lisa and I think Baby Lane, in our turn, to come up with what they wanted. And y'all got a recommendation, I guess that's what I'm asking.
This is what Jason, if that wasn't weird, then we got a check, and I believe this is about the good you gonna get it.
Okay, so you're recommending we, we take all the liability?
Well, I ain't recommending that, like, the law.
Oh, it's the law?
I don't care.
It was me who said it, but.
A lot of times when they said, can I say something?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
A lot of times back in the day, they would make agreements and do agreements and everything, and everyone would follow up on it. And I think we'll keep, I think since the past, since we've been here, we've had to clean up a lot of that stuff. And I think even though everybody thought it was a good idea, the way it was sitting, no different than you say, well, there's nothing in, you know, in the one cent sales tax that, that was just going to the general fund. But really, truly, in my mind, not in your mind, but in my mind, that money was set up to go to the sheriff's office, that one cent sales tax, now, that's my opinion, but that's only my opinion, but, but, but in our essence, the general fund. And I think what happens is, when people stand in good faith and have a conversation on how things are gonna go, and maybe the newspaper was standing there getting it wrong and all those things, but at the end of the day, probably on some of that stuff, you'd probably went down and, and got the state law, you'd have found out that it wouldn't have been able to been set up like that, that's the reason why I, I think it was set up like that in Montgomery that one cent sales tax, because you can't really arbitrarily do it that way, I don't think, because it's, because you're making an agreement with somebody on a sales tax. I, I don't know how that would've worked, but it, it never, it never made it to, to that, but the way I had understood it, just from my opinion, was the one cent sales tax would've went, and then, you know, and we talk about inflation. Well, inflation, yes, the reason why it's tied to one cent sales tax, because the one cent sales tax, two thousand and one, was four hundred and fifty thousand, and as I followed it up for the twenty-something years that we've had it, now it's over nearly a million and a half, that same one cent sales tax. And I think what the citizens was charged for was to run into jail, and that really wasn't for deputies or anything like that, the way it, but however, it got to Montgomery, got passed, which is hard to do anyway, that's where it come to be, but, but I think some of the things wouldn't follow up on it.
Mr. Hendricks?
Uh, I mean, I agree with what you said, but here's the way I look at it. Look at what we've had to clean up, and look at what we haven't got cleaned up, that could potentially cost me hundreds of millions of dollars. We need it all wrote down on a piece of paper, we need to have an agreement, we need it signed, we need to pass a resolution, whatever it is, if it's free, I mean, I don't care, the majority agrees, but we just need to make sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, so somebody down the road won't be cussing us like I've been cussing the commissioners in the sixties on some of the stuff they do.
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I think you've got the contract.
You have that contract.
So it is law, it's law, it's a law.
And then, going back to what you said, about the fifteen dollars, there's only been two agreements, there's been the contract with the city, and then there's a contract or agreement with the commission and sheriff, and how much that goes to the.
Right, that's, that's where I was going, and maybe we can take it to ten dollars, I was, I think, I think, because we sit here, and at the end of the year, if you, if we looked at the dollar amount that was going in there, and he'd been playing it for a while, I wouldn't that much, but at our point, we was fixing to hand out a ten thousand dollars, I paid a lot to help him with the inmates, and I, I think that was sort of the consensus, and then we said, well, just let him go to zero and then use what he got. All I'm saying is, is since this money's coming in anyway, it, to me, to clean it up, and I understand what you're saying. But what I'm saying is, we got into this talking about like it was a bunch of money, then at the end of the day, we found out was what really the money was in the nine-one-one, so we're gonna clean it up another mess we got ourselves into. So I'm just asking, whether you might not like it or you do like it, I, I, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, I want to, I want to like for the, I mean, that, that will go for the sheriff, and it ain't just for feeding inmates, he has to buy cots and blankets and other things he has to get.
All right, so that's gonna be on these, most likely, so the time to do, don't you think the amendment would be during the, after you pass it?
That's what I've been waiting for.
Okay, okay.
I was just saying, you don't have to do two resolutions, you don't have to pass it, then you will have to change the distribution.
And they send that one, and then change, or just change that one resolution to, the fifteen dollars go to the sheriff's department.
It's two different issues. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Yeah.
Do you need that, do you, we need, do you see that being, one of them put on that, on each of them?
You have to have two, one is, because that money goes to the general fund.
We, we might have to vote to okay one of the contracts.
Okay.
And then if it passes, then him it could have another resolution that's gonna say how that fifteen dollars is speaking.
Correct.
All right, so you good with that, everybody give that, put that on each of these?
One agenda for passing the contract, or agreeing to the contract, and the second one would be how that, how that money goes over to sheriff's. And you want, and you want the fifteen going over to them.
I would like for it to be yes, because we, I mean, we're, the more, we're gonna, we're offered pretty more money than the fifteen was to start with. Or at least the thirty-two is, I remember, or the twenty-eight, whichever one. Or the twenty-eight, whichever one's more.
Can, new, new business, right? Yes, sir.
The, uh, I mean, I had a conversation with the mayor in Ranford, and whatever we do for Heflin, he also wants the same thing. So whatever the process is for that, does he need to send a letter or?
Does he not sign the issue yet?
Yeah, they're already, they're still putting prisoners into jail.
I love that.
They signed theirs on time, didn't they?
They, they signed it extension.
They had signed the new.
Why you telling me he had signed it?
He might have.
I mean, I misunderstood. He told me he had signed a new one. But anyway, I just wanna know what the process is for them to get the same thing. Does he need to send a letter saying that he wants to end the contract, or amend the contract, or what?
I think you being the district, if that's what you wanna, I mean, offer him.
Like I said, he and I have had the conversation, and he says, whatever Heflin gives, I says, what I want, I'm good. So.
I think you could ask if that'd be put on there.
Okay.
That's your district. Okay, because you're asking. If y'all get that talk, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I can have him come to me if he.
I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary, but that's, I mean, I, that's the way I see it, as chairman.
Well, let's just get it all done and move on.
Okay. Did you have anything else on this, Lisa?
Uh, I'll watch it. I'll see. I think that's it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I know it's a little bit of a sore subject, probably with all the departments in the county, but somewhere or another, we've gotta come to get some of this work done. I'm not gonna do it all. And I, and I, and I, and maybe, uh, our management person is overwhelmed with the work, or maybe trying to, try, try to figure out some kind of way. Uh, we've got stuff that's been at the sheriff's office going on years that hasn't been done. And, uh, I've got stuff at the extension office, uh, the new lady we've hired for the cleaning to take some of the load off. I just don't know what, how we're gonna get it in direction, and maybe, uh, the commission can look at. Is it where we might come out better, again, some pricing on having this sub app? Where you literally, most of our, most of, all of our stuff is, is plumbing problems. Uh, at the extension office, I've been over there, and you've been over there with me. Uh, I was gonna go over our winnings, but I got tied up on another project working here. Uh, there's a lot of doors that's gotta be, there's just, there's just so much that has been left undone. Uh, I know we went through where we didn't have a cleaning person, we did have a cleaning person, uh, but I just, maybe, uh, with Lisa uh, and the contractor, maybe we can come up with a way, but, but what causes a problem when you sit in, and I know sheriff probably knows this as much as I do, but when you only got one or two showers working in a whole pod, and these guys are in a pod by their shelf, you know, with two guys, and then you got these other guys going in, and they got some of their, some of their personal items that's in there, it just causes so much disruption. And then I was talking with Roger and, uh, with Lisa, and he's saying that, uh, and I've been back there with these diaphragms, and I, we've done this work, and Lane knows what I'm talking about. But I don't say two months to get all this stuff, at least get the showers and the stalls working. I don't know what we're talking about. We gotta get done in two months. I did talk to a plumber, and, uh, and, and I was trying to just say, what will you give me, a plumber for a couple of days? And, and they do the ones in Randolph County, I think.
I think so.
Yeah, and he said, what are you talking about? He says, you know, they go, and they, you know, they, they might spend a day or so with the jail, and they go through and picture toilets, picture scenes. Uh, now that toilet is coming off, you know, because, because you pull it off, you don't know what all you're gonna have to have, and one off runs it out. We've had that toilet almost two years. Twenty-eight hundred dollars what we paid for, and it's still in and stalled. And, and, uh, it's, uh, and I, I, I just, what I'm trying to do is, maybe we need to invest a, a thousand or two thousand dollars, uh, to get some of this stuff done. Uh, I, uh, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying that to me, of all the other places, we can let stuff go, and you've let leaves and stuff, and cutting grass go. But I just think, I just think, you know, being over at the jail, a bit, bit again, and, and listening to this, it just, it, you know, which, you know, I mean, they're in jail, but at the end of the day, you, they, they have a hard enough time managing those inmates, so they can't take a shower, or use a toilet, or wash their hands. Am I right, sir?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I guess, I would say chaos in our population, though.
Yeah, yeah. And it, and, 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 and so what I'm just saying, but anyway, it was eighty-five dollars an hour for a plumber, and I, I asked Kelly, I said, well, Kelly, what if we send somebody over for eight hours? You know, eight hours, you see what the number be, and, and, but when I called with Lane, and he, and this is what Kelly says. Kelly, he said, well, Emmett, you want to have a helper, because the plumber can't do it by himself, because you gotta be inside the cell. And at that time, now, that, I don't know how they do it in Randolph County, but what Lane just told me, that he will assign a guy with two phones or two radios. So you're on the other, so you're on the inside, pressing the button, make sure it all works, and you move along. And then maybe leave three of them getting the lights that's working in the pods, because a lot of the, the little pods don't even have a light in there. So when you lock them in, it's dark, so you just gotta build your way around. I'm just trying to say, if anybody's got any idea of what, we can't, it's our job to maintain that jail right here. And, uh, so, uh, I'm willing to take the doors next week if we get them off to Atlanta and try to have them door, but I, but I talked with, uh, with, uh, Mark. He told me to bring one of them up there, and that he will see what we need to do to get the doors done. So I, I just wanted to bring that problem up, so if anybody's got any idea.
Okay, I got two questions. You said something about two months. Have we got written up, we give them the time limit on something?
Well, we started doing, well, now I've got to say, Lisa has put together a work order, but what happened was, is all of a sudden.
But I mean, we ain't, the fed or the state, nobody's coming in and give us a time limit.
No.
Okay, then, I mean, I agree with what you said, but let's just give them a chance to fix it.
I agree with that.
I mean, yeah, well, you go for thirty thousand dollars without having beat it out.
Okay.
Let's just hire someone, come in, catch up on that common, you're the common.
Okay, well, let's, 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 right here. What you, I, 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 I've got that road, but where's the money coming from? He's got it.
Yeah, well, we, we got a maintenance line.
Okay. But I just, I'm gonna say, we're getting these doors, we're probably gonna have to go.
Yeah, I think one or two days, if we've got the parts, a plumber could just go through there and, and fix that.
We gotta get it done.
And then let Fred work, like you said, work on the electrical.
So, Ms. Tom.
The point is, it's gonna be done. If you go over your budget, then we're gonna have to adjust it. That's the reason we've got to be cautious of what we're spending out. Our money is for situations like this. So, I mean, we've got to fix it, so yes.
And I, and I'd like to also point out, so Lane, and Lane does good by keeping up, and he orders everything. But it's to make sure that Lisa, I understand, that, uh, that, I don't think Monday would be a good day. I think Tuesday would be a good day. That our maintenance man, once we get this stuff straightened out, whatever happens, unless he is called away, Tuesday is his day to, to, to go through, and then maybe we will get back into that problem. It's, it's Tuesday. Is that good, Sheriff? Tuesday would be, because that's what we agreed to when we filled this position from one of his guys from the, from the jail. So Tuesday would be the day, unless there's something going on over, we have to call her out for emergency, but Lisa, if we, when we sit down, and he comes back, just sit down and say, we've got to have him over on Tuesday. And in the morning, when I get up, I'll be on the phone with Kelly about getting all this sub stuff, and I'll get it to you, Lane, to see. Kelly already knows how to fix it. Them guys, he got it, so it ain't like it's gonna be a training program.
Yeah, they've been with our board.
Yeah, and what he, and all we need is, is one of the jailer, or somebody that will go back there, maybe Fred comes back to work, he can be the one on the other side of the fence. You know, Matt Preston, and while he's changing a lot, we're working on that one thing. We gotta get this stuff done.
Ms. Chambers?
Okay, we got a line out under the budget for maintenance. It's not gonna go over thirty thousand dollars. I've seen a bunch of heads shaking here. Just fix it.
Okay.
Spend the money till it's gone. If they get it fixed, if they get it fixed, you know?
We will.
All right, so you had something else you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
About the phones, uh, I think I talked to the bar, and I think I, did I talk to you earlier about that? The money from the phones, the jail phones, uh, I talked some often through it, but, uh, what I was gonna say, I remember the portion, what is the portion we get out of it?
Zero.
Is it zero? All right. I, but it's very, the check backed them up on a hundred dollars.
Last month's check was ninety dollars.
Yeah, it's been just a few hundred dollars the last, what, several years now.
Since the law has changed, but the phone rate, we're talking about inmate phone.
Yeah, inmate phones and pods. Uh, which, I honestly, I talked to the bar about saying, if we might could get that money to the sheriff's office to compensate for some of the, uh, fiscal department money, since fiscal department's over there, but they're not down enough that I can get the grant money. That, that, uh, that's supposed to compensate for the, the decline in the fiscal departments.
John, I, what I don't understand is, and I, I talked to Lane about it, why did that even came into the general fund anyway?
Ah, that's way before.
Why did it not go part of y'all's, uh, what, the store?
Mm-hmm.
Why did it not go into that fund?
I have no.
It seemed like that would've been the most obvious place for it to land, was in that store.
The money's here.
Yeah, everyone needs to go in the law enforcement fund, or, you know, where the sheriff's office needs.
So where's, where's the check going now from the phones that they call?
Comes up here.
General fund. It used to, it used to be a substantial check, years and years ago. Now then, it's dwindling down, so I, like I said, this, this one was, my last one was ninety cents a dollar.
Phone.
That was my question.
Yeah.
That was a hundred bucks.
But it's because you don't have as many inmates, or what?
Well, there was many inmates, and the FCC changed regulations. You know, years ago, you might spend seventeen dollars on a fifteen minute phone call. Now then, it's just a matter of cents per minute.
Oh, they, they come in, somebody sued, and they, you know, took that car soon again. Okay, Ms. Tom.
Can we just, uh, make the resolution to move that fund into over? Because I've said, it's very little where it goes back into that fiscal foreign fund.
All right, you want to make a motion, I mean, you want to add a resolution? Okay.
Um, I'm asking, yeah.
Okay, it's a discussion. Okay, well, all right, y'all discuss. Y'all like to raise your hand, we can all talk for a second.
Talking the most.
As long as you get valid orders. I mean, I agree with that, but I don't know how you would have to do that.
Let me start, John, to find out, and give us the exact, the my own, the exact, my own, to bring it back to us.
And my other question was, do we even have to have a fund? Is it, we gotta legally give them a fund?
I think you do.
Okay.
You sure that's a good answer?
We have TV, we gotta give a TV thing.
Good thing. I can't believe you guys do that.
Did, uh, where are we at on the gate?
Fred has, has been, but he's not the gate guy. I, he said he had to order a new board for it. I, I don't know if the guy knows what to do at the moment. I, I don't know. He's the one Fred got to fix it. It worked for a while, and then it just stopped.
It was so nice there for just a few days. Got to smooth it running gate out there.
So, you know, I, uh, the gate guy wanted to get the programming guy from a different company to come back. I think we paid him like twelve hundred dollars for about fifteen minutes of work, to get it to work. But then he said it needed a new board, so I, I don't know.
So Fred, no?
Fred is the one I've been talking to.
Okay.
Well, he knows, and I, I don't know.
I'm gonna work on the plumber first, and then Fred, when he gets back off sick leave, then we'll talk with him about that.
Yeah, that really needs to, that's a security issue.
Maybe just need to go to a different company. If that one ain't doing the challenge, just write them off.
The problem is, is, you know, you really don't know, if it is a problem, I don't know if it's a proper, a proper, or a gag problem, like at this point.
No, again, I think, I think it's, I think it's the board that goes in the, because one time, from my understanding, that what a little bit I've heard about it is, is, is it wouldn't fit in the, the, the new board wouldn't fit in, and I'm not, well, that's the easiest thing of all. Because where I come from, we knock them down every week anyway, and we have to put a new one up, up there at the hotel, but, uh, but that is, that's, that's the easiest thing. You just gotta have a little support.
Okay, let us go back to where you asked the question about making a resolution.
Yes, first, uh, Lisa will find out if it can be done, if it can be moved to his fund, and how much is it? That's the call, you know, we need those information.
Do you want it on, to be on the agenda, if you can?
It'll have to be me business.
Is everybody good with having that on? New business, right? Okay.
I'm good. I got a question. Everybody's up for this, but I know John's got some fun, but we never slid. Did he stop?
Yes.
Okay. Since, since that guy, you asked him, the sheriff, you asked him, y'all, a lot of scrutiny he had. Yeah. Because he bought a lake there.
Yeah.
All right, so we got you covered, right? Any other questions for Lisa? Yes, sir.
I, I don't know if this is a Lisa question, or this might be a Krista question, since she's our clerk. I would like, and I've talked about this before, but if I had to do a resolution, I would do a resolution this time. I would like on our website, a cost of mile worth of asphalt, a cost of a mile worth of tire gravel, an average cost of leveling and patching, and any other common item that you can think of, because I'm tired of getting these phone calls. For people, I mean, if they knew what they was talking about, I'll talk to them all day long. But when they don't know what they're talking about, it gets a little, it gets a little rough, and sometimes I probably say stuff I shouldn't say. But if you put it out there and say, this is the reason we need tire gravel, because that's what costs too much. Can, can we do the cost?
As long as, as long as, yeah, I mean, I put stuff together like that, just know that it changes.
Well, you put it in there, this, this is something to change in ninety days.
Well, you, well, you do a bit, you do a bit, you want me to talk?
Well, that's, well, like our asphalt.
You do a yearly proposal when you ask for it.
But then that's what I was gonna say, so like asphalt, my price is per ton price. Do you want me to convert that into a standard mile worth of road, or are you gonna say asphalt's this much?
What I'm saying is.
Tell me, say you don't spend a mile.
Whatever, whatever the last bid was on asphalt, that's what I want. Whatever the last bid on tire gravel, that's what I want.
Per mile.
Per mile.
Per mile, because people don't understand, they're just, they're just looking at what that mile.
And then I, and then I have to drop energy.
And, and the kicker is, is how many miles of road you got, and then how much money, how many, much money you get to pay miles of road per year. That's gonna be the kicker, because you, you can't do the.
Yeah.
When we first, when we first come in, it was about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty-five. Now it's about two hundred and sixty-five a mile.
People on here all the time is, I pay my property tax, I want my road.
No, that money goes.
And they know how much per dollar in property tax goes to the road.
But anyway, I would, I would like that to be done, and if I need a resolution, I'll get you a resolution, whatever we need to.
I, I think, I think it's up to you. I mean, if you, do you need a resolution, can you put, you can put something up, and then you get Krista to post it in your. It'll be in your section, right?
But, but if you'll post it, then make it where we can share it.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
And I'd be happy to give you the numbers that we collect on the running bridges.
Okay.
I mean, that'll, that'll all can summarize.
Who updates the website?
Krista knows about it.
Crystal.
I, I mean, the only reason I said her name was, because she's our clerk.
And she gets updated. Anyone can update it as far as it's out, whenever.
Somebody asked, things might be, you know, just post journal notes on the county website.
Post what?
Journal notes.
Why don't they post, why don't they post journal notes on the county website? I thought you did. You have to post them on Facebook, or maybe they don't, or have some.
County web page.
You do.
But that means they're, 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 they're no corrections on, for this gap, the pay rates before the pay study, which, well, they, much less this last way, so it's way down.
We found, all, if every department had time to make, get, get a list or send an email, Krista, Krista will ask her, she can change, make those changes. She's always a pretty good chance in the management. All right, any other questions for Lisa?
All of it. How is it going?
It's going. We haven't gotten all of it settled yet. It was, it was financials, but we are plugging along. Uh, she came by Friday, picked up some more information for me, and then I work Saturday all day, all night at home. Working on, get, get the trial done, so I just cleared it up and stuff like that.
So, we haven't, we haven't been back in yet.
Grant hasn't been back yet. Uh, she's not scheduled to come back yet, which, she, she said, I made contact with her, I just talked to her last week. She said, when we get to the point where we're getting down to just like many, or she thinks, which is usually the last, then we do our federal part. And notes to let her know, and then she'll schedule us, but we're. And notes to let her know, and then she'll schedule us, but we're still, was, I'm still on the line right now.
Okay, so she's actually waiting on y'all?
She is, she's waiting on us for contact, and she's totally new, they move around, go to different places and work wherever they need to work.
Actually, I think that's how I misunderstood, I didn't think, I think, I thought after they left our county, you know, that they not getting a lot.
They, no, no ma'am, they're actually working on law library right now, then they'll be back probably Wednesday this week to, um, kind of finish that audit up. But they frequently will leave and then come back, and some of our audits aren't done every year. Uh, ready commission, perfect justice, they should get done about every six years, and they do six years worth at a time.
Not, that, that's not, that wasn't the norm, it's not like six years, that was not the norm. We, we'd rather have it every two or three years.
I know, I'm sure that's much easier than having six at a time, but, um, it is common for them to leave, move on to something else and then come back, so.
They're having trouble.
It's kind of a thing.
They're having a hard time.
Trouble.
All right, are y'all ready, yes sir?
Oh, we're gonna paint a building down into a convenience center, policy, and I need to buy paint, so I'll buy it out of my discretionary money.
Is that what you wanna do?
Well, that's, I'll do it, yeah, whatever.
He wants to add that.
Why would he have to do that, that's a county building.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't.
I mean, we should be, I mean, if it's, it's a county building, it should come out of the county's fund, should it not?
I mean, that's up to y'all, where y'all want it, I mean, and it, and if that's on that, down there, does that come out of his?
I suppose we might pull it out of that dollar, that construction fee that we got, and end up building this.
We don't have money, we don't have money for a lot of that.
I mean, there's money there, though.
Enough of that? Yes, it's a small, isn't it?
No, that's small. Six hundred dollars for paint.
Oh, it's big.
It's big, shop.
Oh, okay.
But, but it's our bill.
Yeah, that's right, I say you go to the dollar, that dollar collection.
I don't think it's right, but he takes out his discretionary money for other projects.
Okay, so y'all can work it out?
Um, I have a resolution, cause I gotta, y'all gotta do resolutions in that money.
All right, so a resolution to take, how much, you know?
Well, what's that say?
That's a thousand dollars or less.
Thousand sixty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
So he suggested a thousand. To say up to, uh, up to a thousand. Up to a thousand. And you know that, like I, funded in C S A, ours is up to that. All right, good.
Good.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that a consent?
Yes. Everybody read that, yes, ma'am?
I'm just kidding, I do, but I pass it to the end.
Finally.
I'll look at it. Uh, the road project on four oh two, those advertisements and all that, so I put it here and I'll see if you can afford to make some. Shouldn't be nothing much there. We received a H D A M S one hundred grant for hundreds of thousands of dollars, so I need, and that is all from that, so I made a resolution. Resolution to accept that grant, that's Ryan's side.
That is new business automatically, right?
So.
I thought you.
I think so. New business.
Hey, yes sir. Think you got a list of what you're gonna do, that, or, or come?
I do have a list, but I, we, I got, I got it divided up between the three districts.
Okay.
Pretty, pretty evenly, it's, it's plus B, a third, a third, a third. Just gonna have a pipe, just gonna have a pipe laying out, this is just cross drain pipe, so it's just.
I just gotta do my job.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I can rush about it as soon as I could.
So move on, thank you.
Um, then the surplus equipment that Adam was like talking about, my contract is actually up on that thing in this year, so I've got to review it. I don't remember ever getting a resolution to review it, I think I've just always done it, but I was gonna ask, cause I really can't remember.
Contract from what?
With the ALBA to purchase, to purchase.
I think you did it on the first hand, the first time you did it.
That's what I can't really remember.
I think it was the first time you did it, because I was like, cause used to, we used to do it over to.
Okay.
You know, or in that big field.
Anyway, I've got to renew that first of the year, so I guess I'm just a resolution that says, man, I consign.
It's good in there.
And that's no obligation, that's just saying that.
Consent, good?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I got, this is important.
Questions for Lisa? Yes, sir.
They go finish up sixty-three, huh?
Sure. Yep.
He's top?
Uh, I just need to take discretionary money out and have Lee to order some, um, combs. I've got some fire departments that need some combs, so, uh, I need, uh, to take some of my discretionary money out. We don't have to buy a set for about ten combs.
Fifty-seven, now I'm sixty-five, and you're going to mine right? Spending candy money, you just pick them up, they're playing all over the road.
Those, those are forty dollars a piece, so if you want ten, that's gonna be about four hundred dollars, so.
I don't make it even about one.
Mr. Hendricks?
Uh, you don't have any extra ones?
I mean, we've got some, I mean, not necessarily extra, but we, we put them out.
I'll pay for high, um, since four hundred going to Madison.
Okay, will y'all, will y'all view that up and talk about that, we'll put that on discretionary, yes sir?
Did we get the money for the parking lot at, uh, the Chi Hall Library? Did you get it?
I don't see it.
Say that one more time.
Uh, Ms. Sherry Pope, she's trying to get a check up here where she paid to have that parking lot tar and gravel down there that lead them for us. She didn't get it? She just tried, she said she's trying to figure out who to give it to, and I told her to call you.
I'm her friend.
Okay, well, if I don't, then get it.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Talking about tar and gravel, are you gonna get a different machine?
I've been keeping my eyes on, on, really ain't run across it yet, but to, to continue doing that, we really do, we're looking that direction.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I'm just waiting to see if you put any, some, the last day.
I really be looking you, I mean, I, we're gonna purchase you.
Mr. Hendricks? Hey, if Lee and I talked about this, then we couldn't come to an agreement, but I would have thrown it out there anyway. Why don't we move into the modern age and let's do some asphalt?
I would love to, if we could afford it.
Asphalt machine is practically a third of what the chip machine is, and I, I know you don't wanna do it, but all the counties around us are doing it, so.
But, but is it a thick asphalt, or is it just a thin load of asphalt?
Probably said, it gets.
Whatever you don't find, one of them are easy.
What's the cost versus?
My, my concern with it goes back to, to employees and experience and, and purchasing the, you know, little eight foot labor or something like that, trying to control it, I, the rideability on it, I don't see us ever making a smooth mat, and it just, to me.
I wish I had some like tw- thirty, forty dollar.
Now, fire, that time with the tired gravel.
Mr. Hendricks? I mean, you can go over to Carroll County, it ain't smooth, but it is asphalt.
It is asphalt.
And I'm just throwing it out there.
I will say this too, though, when you go to Carroll County, though, that is inmate work, but those are inmates out of the work camp down there that, that have had some, they ain't just throw it out there either.
Yeah, oh, I understand that.
So.
I, I think the guy I saw running the, the actual machine, he even had old stripes on it.
But now, don't get me wrong, I would love to do it, I just don't think we can.
Well, answer me this question, um, the, uh, would it be that much more expensive than tired gravel? I know your equipment is cheaper than the tired gravel equipment.
So for me to go, mm, you gonna make me tell a story? Let me, let me, let me run it.
When you and I talked over there, you said you could pick up a used machine for a hundred thousand, and this chip spread we're looking at is three hundred thousand, man.
Well, I said you wouldn't like to probably find a used chip spread.
Yeah, but we gonna get back into the used crap again, you know, in two years, we'll be back in the same place we're at, so. But, but, if you go spend that kind of money, why don't we do a waste of tire travel?
This, I tell you what, I said, I think we just need to worry about getting the boomers finished through the, through the county, cause right now, we just got a one, I mean, another bush dog. I think it's gonna take a year to get this out, and all this here, overcut and everything.
Or, or take, we, we're a coward. Cause it takes.
So, what I would suggest, in my opinion, is when we get to this year, I, I'd be on board with getting a new tar and gravel machine. You know, I, I, because I, I don't wanna go back down the jump road again, I'm with you, so if it's three hundred thousand, I think that's what we all are coming to get, if I figure out how to get that, if you think that's something that y'all can run. Once we get all this boomers stuff done.
And here's the, the reason I'm putting it out there is, and I agree, we, we need, it's not something we're gonna do tonight, or this month, or next month, but we need to be thinking about it, and, and whether it's an asphalt machine or a chip, I mean, I'm, I'm getting murdered on this, I mean, I'm having people that's actually telling me, you killing my grandkids, cause you putting tired gravel on the road.
But this, that was already the one, right?
Yeah, that was already tired gravel, it's been that way my whole life, but if, if that's, if that's what they wanna do, and they won't pay for it, which I'm buying it, well, let's do that in as many months. But people have to understand that, you know, that if you're gonna do asphalt, like sixty-three, you don't get half of it done, you don't get the whole thing.
Well, I think, I think we're, in my opinion, if I remember correctly, we were going down paving tar and gravel in miles of roads, we were just planning on doing refrigerants and and roads that we could do, I don't think we was planning on in house doing that much without.
But, the last, this, this year, we've done, that was seven miles.
Really?
But that's, they're getting pretty good with it.
Yeah, we had a good machine.
The only other thing, the only other thing, the only thing with asphalt, I mean, it's just the same, uh, this tired gravel, I can haul it as I was running, have it piled up, sitting around waiting on it, if we go to asphalt. I gotta go to, I gotta go wash it for every load, so two little trucks ain't going.
You would have, you would have hired.
We'd have to, we'd have, we'd have to hire trucks out and.
I'm just throwing it out there, like I said, it's not even, I was gonna do this, but just, something for everybody.
Wait, did you ever get any cost on the, the company, you and me, or a cousin?
The only one that I could get, give you a price, he finally come back, it, it would just be eighteen fifty per day. And that's where the recall, half a mile, or three fifty miles, so it's gonna be eighteen fifty a day. And the bad price, I pretty much, it's, it's a lot.
I could buy five thousand, you know, what it is. I'm just saying, anything, anybody up here?
Machines, I need, remember something, talk away. Uh, let, let me get straight on the garden studio, cause I know it's hurting calls on the garden studio. Okay, we only had two bidders, and then one bidder backed out.
That's true.
So, the bid that we got is the only bid there was.
Is the, so the bid we got is the low bid, uh, which was waste management, the other one we had was Arrow, it was about a dollar fifty high. The boat bids had some, uh, clarification, and trying to work through those, I went back to Arrow to say, you know, are y'all interested in this minus the clarifications? And that was not, uh, so, at that point, I was back with, with waste management, that's it.
So technically, that, that was the only, that's the only bid out there, but those, they went through and said, we're not gonna do it.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I would also watch something on that, put on the website before Christmas.
So, I approved a public announcement, that I named Jimmy Typhus this morning, um, I told you to clean it up, send it to y'all, and just reach out as a team, you know, but I could get it today.
And you put, here's your name?
I put her name.
I guess it's a little confusion, because in, when we came in and opened the bids, we, we had these other bidders, and I guess that's when the people were saying, maybe on the video, that we, we did have more than one bidder, but then when it came down to the finanization of, of issues that they didn't make the criteria, then we made another one bid.
That's right.
But that, that's.
We still, we still had some criteria issues that we kind of had to work through, but they were willing to work with us, so.
Rezessions starts this month?
Uh, relocations have already started, we, we already accepted, I'm, that's a little accepting, through, uh, three December thirty-first, but that falls in the weekend, so really the last day we would be there for that five.
Machine, where do you go to get the retribution for, can you download it up to that time?
It's on the website.
Okay. I'm not gonna talk about that till you're ready. Okay. We need a resolution, uh, I think we made a resolution concerning moving the voting house, or the polling house from the Hopeville school to. We did make a resolution, so I'm gonna let the board register, start sending out something to the voters, let them know that they will be voting there. Mr. Waddell has, I talked to him several times, he's got the contract, and he keeps forgetting, I mean, the memorandum, he's supposed to bring it to me. So, I'll say when we get that in here, we're good with that. The other thing is, is, is there a decision yet on, uh, those school guys? I've not seen any contact, I reached out to one of the ladies, and she didn't call me back, so I don't know. But, no, I, I think we should settle it.
I got a text from my parents, and he was very concerned about it, and I'm still getting back, so.
Ain't nobody called me back, it's me.
I'm gonna give a phone number.
Ain't no one number. I'm talking to, I mean, somebody needs one, step up and say, this is what I'm gonna do. Oh, gosh, looks to me, y'all, y'all wanna see what's off? Come by here twice this week, this is the thing.
Uh, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm, I put it on the arch block. I put it, I say, put it on the arch.
Is that money?
Yes, and I got it. I already hear about that thing.
Hold on, let me make one more garbage clarification too. Um, so, when the, the new, the new rate will start first of the year, so that's when they'll say the new rate, this last quarter's bills is the same as it has been been. So, starting in January, they'll say the new rate, and in February, we should have new cans across the, across the camp, everybody will receive a new can. And if they want the green waste management can, so as you're out moving around, you don't see the green waste management can, you know, there's something's, something's up in that, I think.
A lot of that on, at Christmas, man.
Yeah, usually about the second week in January is when those, yeah.
The resolution about putting it on the auction, um, we need to look at, I think they have two different auction companies, and y'all can decide on that, but also, I, I do think that probably needs to be a new business. And this should get people either here saying they want something or do something. It, I, I mean, I'm not kidding you, if, if you get a call, don't call me.
I'm gonna tell them, they'll be coming up on doing new business.
Because, when, when we went to that meeting, I think I said October, and October's already passed, so. Hey, I, 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 I think y'all are willing to give it to them over a recession, I don't think, I don't know if a recession's come forth yet.
You gotta have a decent proposal.
And it's just gonna ride if it stays there. Our burn man, I mean, I, I would be awful. Really? All right, y'all, anything else I wanna get on the resolution, anything, uh, on the agenda, you wanna go over real quick what we're doing, real quick?
Absolutely. Instead of just us for a vehicle, uh, the bank, um, not changing, out of contract, uh, incre- up to a thousand dollars for paint, um, and then lawn interior buying cones for the fire departments. I'm discretionary money, splitting that, that's all consent.
Yes, sir, hold on a second.
It, it's your, is it just kinda a different part of the board, or you have all that stuff now? You can do it.
I'll buy eight combs, uh.
You'll buy eight, or nine?
Whatever she wants, but. Wherever she wants that.
Yeah, just, I'll just need two, just, or, just go ahead and give me four, four for you, eight for you.
Yeah.
I got three.
I'll buy eight, let's move on.
Well, eight, nine, your money, four of your money, get us one of those.
But you like. Cones, did you go get, pick up some, you go to one of them?
Make it like, and notice this.
They have to use.
I want you to do this one.
Okay, that's, that's.
All right.
Uh, new business, um, nine one one, a full-time employee to replace some tenths that we have organizational chart change. Um, also inmate housing contract, Hefflin, uh, amount of Sheriff's Department, feeding would be fifteen dollars, that's another one. Um, another resolution for changing the rammer to the same as Hefflin, um, the phone money to go to the Sheriff's Department, and I'll have some numbers put up for you on that. And, um, accept an ATM agreement, have Robinson on that, um, and then auction all the coke oil.
What did you have on the business?
That was all new business, that was all. We have, we have five or six, we'll consider that, and we got six or so on the new business, and then also we'll have old business switches to paint, and we'll have a couple period, so.
Yeah, it's all that, go get the, 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 the.
Yeah, all this, all this.
I missed one, surplus vehicles for four. Well, that might all be in that word for available. I think we.
Well, you got, you're gonna have to sell, you gotta move one back over to nine one one, I mean, uh, EMS.
Yes, we may need to wait the next month on that, because we need, we need a legal, we don't need, we don't have a legal.
Yeah, we, we will take it.
You made, you made one surplus.
Yeah, except, except, we turned that one back over to EMS, cause I want that off our insurance.
So right now, we're just gonna focus on, on the purchase of a person.
Yeah, and give that, give that ambulance back to the EMS, to get our tag off of it.
Yeah, but he's not using it anyway.
Yeah, we're.
We could go ahead and surplus the ambulance, but don't surplus the suburban, until we get something else on hand.
Y'all had enough?
Where's, where's the window you get the money at?
Oh, yeah, I agree. It is discouraging, it is discouraging, I know.
I put my, I put my salmon.
I, I, I guess we're being.
Okay, just wanna get my salmon on the grill.
You go.
Supposed to be a different cat salmon than that.